Hello and welcome. My name is John McNally and I'll be providing assistance to the mayor and elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones may have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. There will be specific times during the meeting when members of the public can ask questions and provide feedback. The first way is by typing their question into the questions section at the bottom of the GoToWebinar interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. Please be sure to include your name for the record. The second way is by using the GoToWebinar interface and clicking on the raise hand option. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker and unmute their audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. Before speaking, please take steps to minimize any sources of background noise and clearly speak into your device during your allotted time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you, John. And call to order for the City Commission meetings today, May 5th, 2020, at 5:30 PM. We will do an invocation in honor of Teachers Week for a Teacher's Prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Ten Penzerga. "Oh Lord, grant us your strength, so we will have courage in every situation. Grant us your love, so we will never give up on anybody. Grant us your wisdom, so we will show others the path to success. Grant us your mercy, so we will forgive those who have hurt us. Grant us your peace, so we will find the best in everybody. Grant us your hope, so we will never give up. Grant us your joy, so we will be thankful for all of your blessings. And grant us your grace, so you will always be at our side. Amen." That was done by David Bennett. Now to the Pledge of Allegiance.
"I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Now may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Tyson Serga.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Woodrow L. Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
All right. Any additions, leations, or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor, just a brief announcement.
Oh, yes.
South Florida, we'll call it Item G.
Regi, okay.
Right.
All right. Is there any other additions, leations, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve as amended?
We'll move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to informational items from the City Commission. Commissioner Justin Katz, would you like to begin?
None to disclose. I spoke to a number of residents regarding the gas station item tonight. I did not speak to the owners of that property, the gas station itself. That is all.
Okay. Commissioner Woodrow Hay?
Yes, I did speak to some of the residents, one in particular, I know his first name is Troy, about the 7/11 project. I also want to say that the testing for COVID-19 at St. John Missionary Baptist Church, I went out there yesterday and things went very smoothly. I believe they tested some 40-plus patients, whatever you want to call them, and everything was going great. I'm looking forward to tomorrow and Friday. I think this is going to last for about six weeks. That's it.
Excellent. Commissioner Christina Romulus, anything to disclose?
Yes, just, yes, I also spoke to some residents here in District 3 in regards to the 7/11 proposed projects on the agenda tonight. Also, as Commissioner Hay mentioned, I also did attend the first opening day of the testing site for the COVID-19 testing site at the St. John Missionary Baptist Church with Reverend Davis in partnership with, I believe it's Genesis Health. Yes, so that site is there. It's available Monday, Wednesdays, Fridays, 9 to 2 PM. Just a few quick announcements. I want to make sure I say this now. Early Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. I want to make sure I don't forget that. And hopefully you all are enjoying this process, being a mother sometimes, and this difficult time is not easy. But a Happy Mother's Day to every single old mother and mother figure out there. And also, it is May, so it is Haitian Heritage Month, so a Happy Haitian Heritage Month to all the Haitian Americans and Haitians around the world. Happy Haitian Heritage Month. That is all I have for now. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And Vice Mayor Penzerga, do you have anything to disclose?
Yes, I spoke with several residents as well regarding 7/11. I received numerous emails from all parties, or various parties, I should say, and the representatives of 7/11 did reach out to me as well.
All right. As for myself, I did speak with Josh Young and Gunster, representative of the Southland Corporation, Neil Schiller, who is representing the Shell gas station, on a separate matter, Andre Parks. I spoke with numerous residents and read the emails. And I also want to give everyone who is celebrating Ramadan our acknowledgement for this month. I know it must be very trying to celebrate Ramadan this time, but we look forward to celebrating with you in the future. And I believe that's it for me.
Yeah, Grant?
Yeah.
I would like to give a shout out to Boynton Strong, who has a feeding program and they feed like 60 a day or so on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, I believe it is. And they're doing an outstanding job for a citizen here in Boynton at no cost. It's free and it's not a nuisance to the city, and I just want to give a shout out to Irwin and his staff.
Yeah, no, I've seen the updates from Boynton Strong. We're definitely pleased that they are helping the community. I did receive a call from one of our residents regarding the funding for Boynton Strong. And so now that they are a 501(c)(3), maybe that's something that the city looks into, helping as we are with Feeding South Florida and Hospitality Helping Hands. And is there anything else for informational items by the members of the City Commission? Seeing none, we're moving on to announcements. Our first is Representative Joe Casello will provide an update on the recent legislative session.
Okay. You see me? Okay, okay. Well, I'd like to thank you for having me here tonight. I know the last meeting there, we had a little technical difficulty, but we're here this week. I'd like to start by congratulating Commissioner Hay on your election and on Tyson Serga's appointment to be the Vice Mayor. Job's well done, well deserved, I might add.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, Senator Berman had spoke to you a couple of weeks ago about a budget. We passed this session, a $93.2 billion budget. It was a good session as far as the way things went. This is all before COVID-19 set in. But for now, the slot makers, they've allocated $27.3 million in federal funds and $25 million in state funds for the coronavirus to be prepared for their response. Additionally, up to $300 million in reserves have been earmarked for keepsake for the government running during this public health emergency. So that's good. We're thinking that we might have to go up there again for special session. That's still in the making. It hasn't been determined yet. But I think there'll be some funds that'll have to be moved. I don't think that $300 million plus is going to be enough to do what we need to do to get over this pandemic. But some of the highlights of the 2020 budget was we put $500 million for salary increases for public school teachers. We had a 3% pay raise for all state employees. A recommitment to keeping the state's Affordable Housing Trust Fund fully intact this year, which is a great thing, which hasn't been done in previous years. $10.3 million to import prescription drugs from Canada, which is a good thing. We're going to have to get federal approval on that before that can happen. $8.1 million for state veterans' nursing homes, which is a good thing. And $691 million for water quality improvement programs, including the Everglades Registration. We also put aside $47.7 million for two sales tax holidays, a three-day back-to-school tax holiday from August 7 through August 9, and a seven-day disaster prepared tax holiday for May 29 through June 4. So that's, it was a good, it was a good session as far as allocating money for where it was needed. Some of the good bills that passed this year also was one was keeping us children safe. It was called the Alyssa Law. And what this does, it modifies school safety status to require each public school to implement a mobile panic alert system known as Alyssa's Alert. And this system may be capable of connecting diverse emergency service technologies to ensure real-time coordination between multiple first responder agencies during the school's security emergencies. Another one that passed that was good, this is going to have to be a ballot question, but it's looking off at the veterans' families and veterans. And it passed a joint resolution proposing an amendment to the state's constitution which would allow the surviving spouses of deceased and disabled veterans to claim the same homestead property tax credits available to those families before death. Approved by the voters, it will be effective January 1, 2021. Another good one for our waterways and water sources was the combating of the toxic algae boom. This bill protects the water quality by addressing the classic algae booms which devastated many of the Florida's rivers and coastal systems in 2018. Includes regulations on septic tanks, utility wastewater treatment systems, and stormwater runoff and agriculture runoff, biosolids, the sludge of waste, which is processed into fertilizing. So we put $600 million aside for that. Another one, being a former first responder, this was a good one that I was very proud to co-sponsor. It's protecting our first responders and it faces, as you know, a significantly higher rate of cancer due to part of the chemicals that they exposed to when responding to fires. This bill gives firefighters the equipment needed to decontaminate clothing and equipment in order to reduce that exposure. And one which you wouldn't think that we needed, but it came about, was the combating anti-centanimism. This legislation was prompted by, as you know, a Palm Beach County high school principal was fired for saying that he could not confirm that a Holocaust was a factual event. This bill now makes it mandatory that this will be fought in all schools, even charter schools. So we didn't think we had to do that, but obviously there are some people who are still in denial. Another one that I was proud to co-sponsor, it's the limitation of homestead assessments. Right now, we go from assessments, it goes from calendar years. This proposes amendments to the state constitution to increase period of time and during which the occurred benefit from a specified limitation on homestead property tax assessments may be transferred from prior homesteads to new homesteads. And this also will be a ballot question come on November. And another one, another bill, House Bill 115, was Keep Our Graduate Working Act and prohibits the state authority from denying licensing, refusing to renew license, or suspending or revoking license on basis of illegency or default in payment of his or her student loan, which is another good bill. A bill that I filed personally, and I was proud to get passed, was allowing peer-to-peer support, communication between our first responders without fear of reprisal from our superiors. As you know, suicide rates amongst first responders is alarmingly high, and we had an incident here in Boynton Beach which affected us all personally. And we're proud to get that passed. Work was bipartisan, working across the aisle with my colleagues, and that passed. And we're very proud to get that done. One that failed, and I had failed, filed with Senator Cruz, was one for insulin caping insulin payments at $100. We had one hearing on that, one committee hearing, but it died. It never got a second committee hearing. It never got heard on the floor. What I've been learning up there, my short time up there in Tallahassee, is that bills have a tendency to come back each session. It may take three, four sessions to get something passed, but they do come back. So this is another one that I will be filing again come next session. One that appropriations, I was proud to co-pride and quote sponsor the one that allows for the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Diesel Exhaust Installation Project. We got $800,000 from the state to make that happen for our county fire stations. And I know, I know the city municipal mayor, and I know when I was up there to pass, one of the promises that were made that all Boynton stations at some point, sometime, will have these diesel recapture systems installed. Another one that I was proud, that appropriation, that Boynton Beach had put a request in for $75,000 for the Town Square Enhanced ADA Pedestrian Crossing. And I'm proud to announce here tonight that the city was awarded that $75,000 for those crossings. We worked very hard on that with our lobbyist, Matt Forrest, and we did some yeoman work to get that passed. So that's in the budget, and that should be coming to our city. Like I say, it was a good year. We're looking forward to getting back up there. This pandemic here has kind of created a lot of chaos. Hopefully, the monies will stay in place that were allocated to go. And we don't have to move too much money aside. Like I said, we have over $350 million put aside for this emergency. So hopefully, that'll be enough to cover whatever ails us. If there's any questions?
All right. Thank you so much. Let's go down the list. Commissioner Katz, do you have any questions?
No, I just wanted to thank Representatives Casello for coming out tonight. It's good to see him, and I hope him and his family are doing well, and we appreciate the great work he's doing up there for the city as well as public education and all the teachers. So thank you, Representative Casello, for your service.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Hay? It seems like you're muted. Nope.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Joe, I just want to thank you for all the fighting that you're doing for us back here. You're one of us, and so far, I like that idea of the $75,000 for the crossing and everything for Town Square. So keep up the good work and look forward to hearing from you soon.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Commissioner Romulus, any questions, comments?
Yes. First of all, thank you, State Representative. It's always good to know that we have one of our own up in there in Tallahassee, working hard for us. And I know that you're one of those who doesn't get tired. You keep going. So thank you very much. My question for you, which, last time when we had Senator Lori Berman on, she kind of alluded to it. I don't know if there's been any updates. I hear that you guys may be going back for session. What does that look like, and what do you think may happen, and how would that possibly affect us here in Boynton?
Well, I don't know how it will affect us in Boynton, other than, you know, some of this appropriation money might be diverted into where they might need it. You know, the rumor is, and she alluded to it, and I alluded to it earlier this evening, that we might be getting called up for special session. Right now, there's no real appetite for that to happen because we signed a petition on the Democratic side to call for a special session. And right now, they're taking a poll to see if they'll make that happen, if enough legislators want that to happen. The governor, in my opinion, my opinion only, doesn't want that to happen because the subject matter up there is going to be about this unemployment chaos that we're having. There's so many, my wife included. My office, we get here 50 calls a week, if not more. On the, not able to log on to the website or see where their claims are. So it's a real problem. People are frustrated. People are hurting financially. So I don't know if the governor wants us to go back up there and be talking about broken system. But we've got a lot to talk about, let's see where this pandemic, how long it's going to last, and what the ramifications are going to be for the Palm Beach County. So hopefully, we do get back there. I know I voted to go back up. I think we have a lot to talk about.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Penzerga?
Thank you, and thank you, Representative Joe. I wanted to ask you about some of this funding. You said there is about $350 million for COVID funding. This was during session, to be clear?
That's correct.
And where do these funds come from? And the reason I'm asking is I'm concerned about how COVID funding might jeopardize, I mean, obviously, that's very important and needs to happen, but that money needs to come out of somewhere. You know, we fully funded, or you fully funded, the housing trust and the teacher pay and everything else. And so what do you think is going to be in the chopping block? Because money has to come from somewhere.
I personally think everything is going to be on the table. I just don't know what direction that'll go. I know we have over $3 billion in reserves, state reserves.
Oh.
A lot of this money comes, as you know, our state budget is based on a lot of, on sales tax and food taxes and such. Obviously, that hasn't been happening. So you're absolutely right. These are the things that are going to have to be addressed. But like I said, I don't know if that $350 million has been allocated to this already. It's going to be enough? I don't think so. So where those other funds, monies are going to come from, that remains to be seen. But I would believe everything will be on the table. I would think that, you know, some of the things that are not popular up there, like the Sadowski Fund, the trust, there's like over $300 and some odd million in that fund right now for affordable housing. I think that might be tapped into, and this is all speculation. I have no inside knowledge of this. And my biggest fear is that they'll come over, come after the teachers' pay increase, which was hard fought up here to get that passed, and, you know, in the 3% pay raise for all state employees. I think everybody's going to be affected by this, but what degree, I don't know yet.
All right. I just have one more question for you. I asked this question to Senator Berman. I wanted to ask the same question to you because I know there was a Senate bill, but there was also a House bill regarding capping insulin cost. As you know, a lot of Americans, you know, are burdened with diabetes, and it is a massive financial burden, and the price of insulin has just skyrocketed. I know there was a House bill to cap that, I think about $100 a month. Has there been any, what's the update from the House side on that?
We never, I filed that bill. We never got a hearing on the House side. It went through one committee on the Senate side, and it died. That was it. Was set aside and not heard for a second committee. So it went absolutely nowhere this session.
Was there an explanation for that from anybody? I mean...
No, they...
It crosses aisles. Everybody's affected by this.
They don't have to explain why they don't vote or vote for any particular bill. I thought it was a great bill. Like you say, insulin has gone up like 212% right now. I think it's like $256 for a 30-day supply, where it was like, you know...
Right.
So, yeah, it's real concerning. But like I say, I'm going to refile that bill next session, and hopefully, we'll get some legs on it. Like I say, bills are refiled every year. So I've got discouraged when a couple of my bills died, but I've learned that you always can come back up and get a second bite at the apple.
All right. Well, thank you so much, and I hope you keep pushing. I appreciate all the work that you've done.
Yeah, and thank you. And I just want to say that, you know, being up there at the state level, obviously, there's 120 of us that sit on the House floor, being in the minority party. It's partisan politics, no mistake about that, and I have no problem with that. I understand. I've built up some great relationships across the aisle with some of our state reps. And so that's the only thing, way you're going to get any kind of business done in Tallahassee. I've learned that very early. It's not being like on the local level. I know we had some differences up there in the House. You know, there's only five of us up there that had any decisions. And, you know, it's, so that was very frustrating early up there. But I've learned that you've got to reach across the aisle and be a team player. And sometimes, it's not getting everything you want, but some of what you want, and that's a success story.
All right. So Representative Casello, my question is that does the governor actually have the authority to change the budget without a special session?
Yes. Well, he cannot, he can veto things, you know, so he's got that power, veto power.
So he can reduce certain appropriations...
Yeah, exactly.
...without any of the legislature's approval?
Exactly, exactly. You know, which, we'll see. We'll see. We'll keep our fingers crossed. We'll keep fighting, and hopefully, we can get back up there and, you know, we can get back on the normal road.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your service. And is there any final questions? Nope. All right, appreciate it.
Thanks for everything you people do. Thank you.
All right. We're moving on to our second announcement. Proclaim the month of May as Guardian Ad Lightum, Speak Up for Kids and Foster Care Appreciation. John McNally, could you, I guess, Tonia Kajust, of Speak Up for Kids will accept the proclamation after I read it. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, "Whereas the Guardian Ad Lightum program is a force of volunteers who advocate on behalf of children who have been abused, neglected, or abandoned by their caregivers. And whereas Speak Up for Kids of Palm Beach County serves as exclusive nonprofit supporting funding wellness, normalcy, and therapeutic initiatives for children in care. And whereas in 1984, Palm Beach County adopted the program and began with 15 volunteers, and currently has a corp of greater than 600 volunteers, serving the nearly 1,600 children in care. And whereas in 2008, Speak Up for Kids of Palm Beach County was founded to fund gaps in needed services for child victims served by the Guardian Ad Lightum program. And whereas to illuminate the magnitude of the financial benefit of the collaboration between the Guardian Ad Lightum program and Speak Up for Kids brings to Florida. The services donated by Guardians across the state serve Florida over $18 million in salaries and mileage reimbursement costs. That is greater than the $1 million for Palm Beach County alone. The Guardian Ad Lightum program and Speak Up for Kids are making an impact in children's lives, and the return on investment the program brings to the county is unparalleled. And whereas Boynton Beach is dynamic, multicultural, and vibrant city, counted as the third largest in Palm Beach County. The leadership of the Guardian Ad Lightum program and Speak Up for Kids is honored to join forces and collectively build awareness around and advocate for the best interests of our communities most vulnerable. And whereas the Guardian Ad Lightum program and Speak Up for Kids are hereby recognized for their joint efforts and successes in standing united to ensure local children thrive. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2020 as Guardian Ad Lightum, Speak Up for Kids, and Foster Care Appreciation Month." Do we have...
Mayor Grant, Tanya, could you stay? I apologize if I messed up the name. It has been unmuted, and it should be able to speak.
I have, yes, I am here. And on behalf of Speak Up for Kids, the Guardian Ad Lightum program of Palm Beach County, all of our volunteers, and the almost 1,700 children we serve, we thank you for this proclamation. There are so many children who are vulnerable... and in need of caring adult voices to represent their needs in the court system, and adults who are consistent in their lives to let them know that someone cares. So today, the City of Boynton Beach has joined us in the effort to ensure safety, security, and hope for child victims of abuse. Thank you all for your commitment to Speak Up for Kids.
Thank you. Uh, does the commission have any questions? Yes.
If if um any of the speakers wanna come onto camera to to say thank you on the proclamation, I'm happy to go off. So if they just so you can see them, if you'd like me to do that, just may wanna ask each one if they're willing to go on camera. I'll shut mine off.
I don't know if as attendees, they have that capability.
Um, that would be difficult to do, Lori.
Sorry, I'm trying to help. Okay.
No worries. But we did hear you, and thank you so much, Tanya. Uh, but we have a question from Commissioner Romulus.
Not a question, just a correction. I always hate butchering people's names. It's Tanya Kajust, and thank you, Tanya, for everything that you're doing with the Guardian at Lightem program. Um, I know a little bit of it from some from some experience I've had with um colleagues of mine who've gone through the process and who uh, you know, represent and and help out in that way, and it's really important. And I thank you for the work that you're doing and the lives that you continue to change every single time um, a child is represented through that process. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Tanya. Our next proclamation is for May twenty twenty as Mental Health and Trauma Informed Care Month. Gerda Klein of the Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee will accept the proclamation. City Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and everyone experiences time of stress and struggles in their lives. And one in four adults and one in five youth ages thirteen to eighteen experiences serious mental illness. And whereas sixty percent of adults and fifty percent of youth do not receive the treatment necessary for their mental health needs due to the limited or no knowledge of the need, barrier to care, or fear and shame. And whereas research recognizes that adverse childhood experience, ACEs, which include but are not limited to physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, physical and emotional neglect, household dysfunction, untreated mental illness, or incarceration of a household member, domestic violence, microaggressions, and separation or divorce involving household members are traumatic experiences that can have a profound effect on a child's developing brain and body, and can result in poor physical and mental health during childbirth, childhood, and adulthood. And whereas promoting mental health and wellness leads to higher overall productivity, better educational outcomes, lower crime rates, stronger economies, lower healthcare costs, improved family life, improved quality of life, and increased lifespan. And whereas the City of Boynton Beach recognizes the work of Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee impacting awareness and education, access to services, and acceptance of the importance of mental health and well-being to a person's overall success and supports and the implementation of trauma-informed approaches throughout the systems of care. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of May of two thousand twenty as Mental Health Awareness and Trauma-Informed Care Month.
Mayor Grant Gerda Klein's audio has been unmuted. She should be ready to speak.
Thank you. On behalf of the Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I am proud to accept this proclamation, and thank you, Mayor Grant, for the city's declaration that May is Mental Health Awareness and Trauma-Informed Care Month. We also express deep appreciation for the city's continued support of mental health education and awareness in our community. Our Mental Health Committee here works uh for the Get Your Green On County Campaign, uh, which takes place during this month. Because green is the official color of mental health. And just last Friday, we had a two-hour Zoom kickoff for the fifth year of the countywide Get Your Green On campaign. Watch for May twenty first. It's the Get Your Green On Day, when everyone in the county is encouraged to wear green and send a selfie on social media. So you can expect to see lots of green that day. So make sure you're a part of it. The committee's also been quite creative to find ways to connect during this period of isolation. So watch for virtual education sessions and other ways to promote good mental health. Go to GetYourGreenOn.org for more information throughout the month. If ever there was a time to promote mental health awareness in our community and support each other through the extraordinary struggles, anxiety, and losses caused by this pandemic, that time is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerda. And uh, I would not that we have Woodrow Hay, the, are you still the president of the Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee?
Yes, I am.
All right. So would you also say a few words?
Well, I just wanna thank uh this commission, city, and everyone for your continued support. Uh, we are doing uh a lot of great work. We're partnering with many organizations, and we're gonna look, uh, be coming to you for some financial support. Uh, because it does take uh funds to do the job that we're doing. Now, we're looking forward to uh doing uh many programs within our churches. There's one coming up on the sixth, uh, I believe it is the fourth, one of those. But anyway, there's a lot on the table, and this is the time that we need to really promote and and put the spotlight on mental health, because there's a direct correlation between what's going on and uh and mental health. So thank you again for what you're doing, and thank you for the proclamation. Thank you.
You're welcome. And uh, I know that I was working with uh your commu- uh committee regarding uh door hangers. So um, you know, one of the big resources available to everyone for free is two-one-one. And so I just, you know, I know that in the past, this year, we give recognition for two-on-one. Uh, but they are kind of your your first and last uh resource available to everyone here in Palm Beach County.
Yes.
All right. Uh, anyone else from the commission that would like to speak? All right. Seeing none, moving on to our third proclamation. Which is proclaim May third through the ninth, twenty twenty as Municipal Clerk Week. Uh, Crystal Gibson, City Clerk of Boynton Beach, will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time, art, and vital part of local governments exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provided the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in the educate, in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the week of May third through the May ninth, two thousand twenty, as Municipal Clerk's Week. And further extend appreciation to our city clerk, Crystal Gibson, Deputy City Clerk, Queen Esther Neves, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their example dedication to the community they represent. That would be Tammy, Catherine, and Shayla. All right. And then Crystal? Are you?
I wanna
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just wanna thank you very much for proclaiming this week as Municipal Clerk's Week. And it's an honor to be a public servant within the clerk's office, which does so much in every municipality. Your clerk's office has a wonderful staff. Like you mentioned, I just wanna take a moment to recognize Deputy City Clerk, Queen Esther Neves, Specialized Assistant Tammy Stanziani, Shayla Ellis, who is our records coordinator and cemetery point person, and Minutes Specialist Catherine Cherry Duberman. They all work very hard behind the scenes and do an excellent job for the city, and I extend appreciation to them as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, does anyone from the commission have any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, coming back, coming back after a few years of of being on the dials and being the commissioner. You know, I thought it was like uh riding a bicycle, you know? Uh, you just jump on it and start riding. But uh, Crystal, I don't want your head to get too big, but uh Crystal's been an absolute danger. Uh, there were few mistakes that I made, and she just so calmly said, no, I'll do it this way, whatever. So I really wanna give a shout out to uh to Crystal Gibson and her staff of the fantastic job and patience uh that they seem to have with 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 all of us. So uh, thank you, and keep up the good work.
Yes, and uh, Crystal, thank you for the election that we had here in the City of Boynton Beach.
Most apprec- most welcome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Crystal.
All right. Seeing no, no more further questions or comments, we will move on to item three E. Uh, Mary Lou Bedford, Chief Executive Officer of the Central Palm Beach County Chamber of Commerce, will present on member benefits.
Uh, Mary Lou, you have been unmuted.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Grant, and all your commissioners. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, and thank you for asking.
No worries. I just wanna thank you for the opportunity and for asking me to present tonight. I'm sorry I don't get to do that in person, but um, you know, I just wanna share a little bit about the Central Palm Beach County Chamber and who we are. For those of you who are not aware, we merged uh two chambers in two thousand twelve. We were the Greater Lakeport Chamber and the Palms West Chamber. Uh, so we now encompass twenty-two of the thirty-nine municipalities in our footprint. We go from, as one of our board members coined, cane to coral. So we go from the ocean all the way out to the glades from Boynton Beach, all the way up to Palm Beach Gardens. So we're a third of the county, um, the central region of the county. So that is who we are in terms of our geographic uh coverage. I will share with you some of the things that I'm involved with, so you have a little understanding of of the who I am as as the CEO. Uh, I am, I do serve on the county's Housing Task Force for the central region. Um, I'm also a member of the League of Cities. I see our city manager Lori and a lot of you there uh monthly. I am uh, sit on the Discover the Palm Beaches Board. I was appointed by Commissioner McKinley for that uh role. Um, I'm also uh have an opportunity to work with our county, with Virginia Baker, very strong relationship with her, all of our county commissioners. Um, Lori Berman, Senator Lori Berman's been a member of our chamber for years and was gonna be uh updating us on some legislative updates in April, but unfortunately, that luncheon obviously was canceled. Um, so I have a strong relationship with her. I look forward to developing my relationship with Representative Casello. I know he's doing a wonderful job for the the region. The chamber, uh, you know, one of the questions was, you know, what is, what's the member benefits? Well, through this interesting time they're going through now, the member benefits obviously have changed dramatically. But I will say, and I'm very proud of the fact that our chamber has been instrumental in being a resource for our businesses throughout the area. We on our website um updated daily. We have all the resources that they need, whether it's the SBA funding, uh, whether it's the unemployment, and I do, I get calls, just like Representative Casello was sharing, about unemployment and and the struggles that our members and businesses have had. Uh, we have had calls, uh, we did a call with the US Chamber a few weeks back to help people with the funding, and now our, what I call Phase Two, has been focusing on how do we prepare our businesses to be ready to come out of this uh economic situation and and reopen. So we had last week a um conference call for members to participate in, which talked about the legalities, what they need to know, when they do open their businesses. Uh, so we talked about the legal aspects, the safety, and the insurance aspects, work and compensation. And then next Monday, we have um a call regarding marketing, and how are these members, especially our small businesses who are really suffering at this um stage, how we can market now, currently, as we still are under uh the shelter in place, you know, as most of South Florida, as you know, is is, and then how we market once we are reopened as a business. And so we are doing a lot of what I call a help center, if you will. We get calls every day, and even though our staff are all working from home, we have been able to continue to service our members, and so that's something that we will continue to do as we move out of this. Um, you know, the last time I actually was at a commission meeting, actually, my first commission meeting for Boynton Beach was uh, two thousand fourteen, I believe, was when I was presenting regarding the High Ridge Landings project, and how important workforce housing is for our our area. And uh, you know, kudos to Back Weir and East Wind Development. That was a very successful project. And I'm, you know, excited about a lot of the projects you have, obviously, the town center and and so many more. Um, I will share, I I did meet with Mayor Grant and a few others um back in February. And one of the things they shared was, what I think is just so great, is the Business Over Coffee that you have at Station Five, and we had, we invited our chamber members from the Boynton Beach area that are um part of our chamber, and several of them did attend, and as well as our Director of Business Development. So a- as far as a chamber, we are regional, but we are very much uh hands-on in in all of our municipalities, and making sure that we're aware of what's going on, you know, through the relationships that I have cultivated over the years and and through our other members and and board members. Uh, we make sure that we're, you know, stay in touch. Obviously, some of the members that we've had for years is like Bethesda, and Serve Pros around the corner from your your town halls serves on our board. Um, there's um, I I, there's tons of them, so I don't wanna leave anyone out, but we are very much entrenched. I will tell you that Bednar um Farms, they are involved in our Farm City we have every year. So our chamber brings a a a different perspective, if you will, as a Chamber of Commerce. We have quite a few of the industries within our chamber, and even though we're regional, we try to make sure we have those touchpoints with each municipalities. So, questions?
Thank you. Yes. Um, any from the the city commission?
Uh, yes, I uh, I do. Mary Lou, it's nice to have you. My question, I was just talking with uh my pastor uh today uh at the church, and we were talking about uh life after the coronavirus. I'm just wondering, do you have any information from the religious uh segment as far as ideas and what it might look like, that I could get further information?
Well, it just so happens, Commissioner Hay, that I was a youth minister for twelve years, and very entrenched with the dioceses of of the of Palm Beach and our our local um churches and synagogues. Um, I've had conversations with a few of them just from my past relationships with them. Right now, what they're focusing on is helping with the feeding of so many of our our unfortunate folks who just need the help. So that's what the the main focus is. Obviously, most churches, as you know, have been doing virtual services. Um, and so I think I I have a feeling as we move forward, there'll be a continuation of that, because there has been some great outreach for a lot of our um churches, that maybe some people who had not been engaged before now are via the, you know, the social media and and that aspect. So as far as programs in place, um, besides focusing in on feeding South Florida and participating in some of those volunteer um situations, I don't have anything, but I, it's a great question, and we can find out a little bit more about what particularly they're doing as far as uh their programs moving forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, yeah, thank you again, Mary Lou. Uh, can you give us uh your website or phone number so that we know how to contact you?
Absolutely. And I will make sure that I can uh email it also to David Scott, who was really great about coordinating this for us. But our our website is CPBchamber.com. Again, that's CPBchamber.com. You can also email us at info at chamber.com, and we we make sure that, or excuse me, CPBchamber.com, that's info at CPBchamber.com. We um update our website every single day, and I'm happy, I will share in an email my contact information, and you have my cell phone number and my my work number. So uh, it's a pleasure, and I look forward to getting to know all of you more.
And thank you. And I know that uh, you know, we are also part of the the Boca Chamber, and so this way, all of the the businesses in Boynton Beach who wanna do business north or business south, they they have that opportunity. Um, we look forward to, you know, working with you because uh the the world has changed a little bit, uh, or a lot a bit because of the this pandemic, and so the the new aspect of networking. You know, we don't necessarily shake hands at meetings anymore, or so we're looking forward to you as the chambers to help us, you know, conduct business and to expand our um our economies uh when this is all over.
Absolutely. And I have a great relationship with Troy McClellan, my counterpart at the Boca Chamber, and we're happy to work together, and anything we can do, our our goal is to serve our our business community and our members, so we're happy to do that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
All right. Our next announcement is All right. Our next announcement is, uh, a presentation of the Town Square Opportunity Fair Hiring Efforts and Results. So, so do we know who will be presenting?
Yeah, Mayor Grant, there's, uh, five individuals. So give me a second. Right now I have unmuted David Scott. Um, there will also be Charisma Adams. Uh, you've been unmuted.
Sophia.
Let's see, Michael Corbett, you have been unmuted. It's, uh, Mark Heffron, you have been unmuted. I think that's five. Oh, Sophia Nelson, sorry. Thank you. You should all be ready to go.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? Good afternoon or good evening?
Yes, yes, evening.
This is Sophia Nelson with SA Nelson. Um, thank you, Mayor Grant, the deis, uh, Lori, our city manager, for allowing us to do this presentation today. Um, hopefully everybody is well and doing okay. So, um, we wanted to take this opportunity because you guys asked to bring you, uh, the information about the opportunity fair that was held on February 14th. Kind of want to let you know what our scope was for that day. So our job for, for, um, um, February 14th was to plan, organize, execute the opportunity fair and to connect local job seekers and hiring managers, train and organizations and prime contractors, um, on that day. Our responsibilities included marketing, community outreach and logistics of that event. Part of our scope did not include direct hire or placement. We had 126 people, opportunity seekers to come to our event that day. And I know the direct question was about Boynton Strong. As a self-identified Boynton Strong members, we had 37, um, from our list of 126. We are vendors. We had 27, uh, vendors. Uh, ranging also with Michael Corbett, who is here. If it's, he needs to, um, if he needs to say anything, he can. We had 27 of those. The direct hire companies were, uh, Builders Plus, Capital Carpet, Crawford Trains, Dafco Electric, Foster Marine, Hard Drives, High Power Electrical Contractors, Landscape Service Professionals, Lipstick, uh, Pegasus Painted, Pinnacle Plumbing, Wrightway Plumbing, Southeast, A Mechanical, Sprinkle, um, Matic, TNT and Techta, Techta Roofing. Out of these direct hires, zero members of the Boynton Strong, um, community were hired. But the number of hires from Boynton Beach on this project were eight. Um, we did do some value-added assistance. We had two pre-meetings with the Boynton Strong members, um, at the Carolyn Sims Center. We went over what would the job awareness entail? We did resume review and we talked about how we could support them after the event. We did two additional meetings after the job fair, which I did take names just to make sure that those names would go back to the direct hire so that they knew that they were part of the Boynton community. Um, and we also started a tracking process with the direct hires. Emails and phone calls were sent to participating vendors along with opportunity fair signees. They also got a spreadsheet and each month we tracked with these direct hire, um, vendors to see who was hired from Boynton. Not just Boynton Strong, but Boynton, uh, in its, in a sense. So like I said, eight people from Boynton were hired. Our lessons learned, the training component was the missing ingredient. Skill set, there was a skill set deficit in the city as it pertained to skilled labor. Re-train, retrained and skill enhancement were the most requested service by the Boynton Strong members. Local boy, we, we hired a lot of local Boynton Beach subcontractors and their need for additional labor was low or non-existent. Total Boynton Beach subcontractors that participated in the opportunity fair were four. I will allow Charisma Adams or Mark Heffron or, uh, Michael Corbett to add in, uh, Charisma if they needed to.
No, I think that was pretty comprehensive. Um, again, one of the primary things in our scope was to just connect the opportunity seekers with the job opportunities. Uh, when the individuals came in, just so you understand how the flow went, we checked everyone in and we did ask, how did they hear about it? We did record the information. At the time of the opportunity fair, people were given the freedom to go to whichever vendors or participants that they either had a skill set that matched or that they were interested in completing the application for. Um, I'm not sure if Sophia mentioned it, but all of the vendors accepted applications on the day of the event. However, we did not review any of the applications or participate in any of the placement of those. So we can't specifically speak to that, but all of the vendors accepted applications on that day.
What we know we cannot, um, say for a fact is that every Boynton Strong member gave an application to every one of our vendors.
Hi, this is Michael Corbett with Career Source. I want to commend Sophia and her team. They did a great job. It was a well-organized event. It was consistent flow of job applicants. It was professionally presented. All the vendors were looking seriously at candidates with their opening. So I'm always happy to do events with the city and with Sophia. Again, you did a great job and we were happy to participate.
Thank you. We can, we can open up for questions if needed.
Thank you for that. Um, uh, let's go down the, the list. Uh, Commissioner Katz, you don't mind me starting with you each time?
Sure, that sounds good.
Okay. Yeah. Do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, no questions. I just wanted to thank, uh, Sophia and everybody. Um, you know, again, this, this kind of review was sparked by some concerns or assertions about, uh, the results from the job fair. And I just think it's important for everyone to remember that the job fair is an opportunity. It's not a guarantee and, and that people need to show up. They need to fulfill some very basic requirements and qualifications and be ready and, and willing to, you know, to be employed. And if that's not the case, sometimes people simply don't get hired. So I, I don't want people to get discouraged and think that these job fairs are for naught just because some people don't get hired. Um, you know, even though the goal is to, to get people in there who, who have, have some level of skills, might not have some level of skills. There are still some basic requirements and follow-through required and, and, you know, we hope to improve on that in the future. And I applaud the efforts, uh, made by Sophia and the rest of the team. So, um, you know, again, I, I hope people don't get discouraged by this, but it, it works the way it's supposed to in that candidates who apply and follow through and fit a basic criteria are, are often presented an opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Hay. You gotta unmute yourself.
Thank you. I really want to commend, commend the group for their efforts. I do have one particular question in terms of, I think I heard you say something about, uh, the, the skill set, a deficit. Could you, could you share some light in what particular areas, uh, uh, that was in, if you recall? Where, where there was liking?
Sure. One of them was heavy equipment operating. I know that quite a few of the members of Boynton Strong already were working construction. However, they wanted to go up a notch, not necessarily do just the manual labor piece. They definitely wanted to do heavy equipment operating, um, and just move up their skill set maybe from block lane to masonry. I'm, I'm not a, a contractor, so I don't want to start getting into the, um, the, the verbiage of, um, construction. But heavy equipment operating was one of the number one thing that they definitely wanted to be a part of.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right.
Go ahead, Charisma.
And I was going to respond. I'm, I'm sorry. Um, Commissioner Hay, I was going to add to that. There was a section, um, when we, uh, received applicants, there was a section where a person was able to identify their skill sets. So there were some pre-selections that they could make, electrician, plumber, like Sophia said, equipment operator, painter, landscaper, HVAC. They were able to make those selections. Majority of the individuals, and I can break it down and give you and send back if you need it, it's if we break down. Most of the individuals that came in from that specific group identified as laborer. That was it. There was one individual as a construction manager, one, one, construction manager, one HVAC tech, I think two electricians. But other than that, everyone selected general labor. And what Sophia was saying earlier in her report, there were very few opportunities for a general laborer in there. We, you know, a lot of the opportunities, uh, when the Boynton Beach subcontractors came, most of them already had employees that lived in the city. So of people who were looking to hire, there were very few just general labor positions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Romulus?
I have no question.
All right. And Vice Mayor Penserga?
Yes. Hi, Sophia. It's, uh, nice to hear your voice again. I remember the last time we spoke.
Hi, Commissioner Oster.
I'm trying to wrap my head around a couple of things. Um, I'll just limit my questions to a couple. So when someone applies and they're rejected, are they provided the reasons for why they were rejected? I mean, are they fully aware of what it is that's holding them back?
Uh, so just to walk you through again, we had a, not an application per se, but a screening from just our end where people were able to register. On our registration platform, it does ask them where, what are their skill sets? So we're able to then know on our end who's coming. Once they get, once they got to the opportunity fair on the 14th, the applications that they filled out, which we encouraged them to visit every single person that was there are, were taken by the hiring managers that were on hand. On my follow-up with a lot of those hiring managers, we know for a fact that quite a few made phone calls to some people from the list. And those, those calls were either not returned or the numbers were disconnected. And we did make notes of those. We know for a fact, we don't know for a fact if anyone was rejected. We do know that people did not respond to calls that were made.
That is unfortunate. And you answered my other question. So, uh, that, that ends it for me. So thank you so much. All of you.
Thank you.
Um, so this is, uh, was a failure in my view. Um, the fact that eight people got hired out of 127, that is atrocious. And it seems that we need to take the blame as a commission because we did not put in the contract of what we really wanted, which was people to get hired. Um, I think that we need help, uh, from staff or maybe Sophia Nelson, you need to help us so that we actually get people hired from the city of Boynton Beach and not an opportunity to get hired. The, the, the difference is great because one, you're getting paid and the other, you don't. It's, it's, it's sad because, you know, the city, the CRA, we spent tens of millions of dollars uh, that have gone through construction costs and the equity has not stayed here in the city with, uh, our residents. And, uh, that's something that I'm glad we have the opportunity to see that we failed. With what we've done with criteria affairs in the path, past. But now we know that what we are doing is not working and we need to change that. So for any of the, the future projects that we have, we mandate certain number of people get hired locally. Um, not just having an opportunity to be hired because the, the fact that our developer did not, you know, only needed eight-day laborers doesn't make sense. You know, the, the fact that the affordable housing did not use any day laborers does not make sense from the local people. And we as the city need to do a better job with, uh, the disconnect where you don't get a phone call or you miss a phone call, you don't get an email, you miss an email, that you don't get a job. So, um, thank you, Sophia and your team for the, the learning experience. Uh, hopefully we can do better for our residents in the future.
Um, Mayor, Mayor Grant, if I can say, um, the lesson learned here was, again, like I stated, the training component was a missing ingredient. So if you're not going to, um, put that as a part and, and also fund it, then, um, then all is going to be for naught. Um, there is a skill deficit in your city and so the funding must, now some of our partners that were there, we did have South Tech. We do have, uh, Career Source and we did have Palm Beach State. Again, they could have taken any one of those opportunities, but it, there was no funding for them to go be a part of that so that they can increase their skill sets. And so if you had another opportunity fair, this again possibly could happen because the same people will be applying who have not increased their skill set to move forward.
Yeah, and that's something that we need to be working on. Thank you.
Mayor Grant. I'm sorry, may I add one thing as well? There's one, uh, variable in here. So I think one thing we do have to look at. There was a, an extremely high percentage of local subcontractors that participated, that employed local residents. So to say that a large amount of the money was not spent in the city, I don't know if we can quantify, we could quantify that absolutely. Because some of those, it, some of those, Dafco Electro, some of those people had million-dollar contracts, multimillion-dollar contracts in your city and their employees do live in Boynton. That's a variable.
Abs- absolutely there. I'm sure there are things that I, we miss. However, if we don't have that evidence that says that that is true, it doesn't count.
The evidence was, um, provided when we did our work, when we did the subcontractor, um, the subcontractor and the prime.
For subcontractors or is there more subcontractors? And how many employees?
When we did the subcontractor and the prime update, um, a couple of months back, uh, those numbers were, we could, um, I'm sure David Scott will be able or we can, um, get that information to David Scott for you to review.
Okay. I appreciate that. Uh, Lori, you had a, your hand raised?
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, this, this part of the learning experience, and David and I have talked about it often, that where the, the skill set is what needs to be worked on in our community for many people. And it's through our Building Wealth Program is really working on, uh, along with the CRA to, to fund training opportunities and, you know, a series of classes on how, you know, how to go about when finding a job, getting a job, where there's certain skills and helping to partner them with the agencies that can give them the detailed training, if it's actual, uh, technical skills that they need to learn. But that's where I think our focus needs to be, to be able to get them ready to, to help them get employed. So this, this opportunity fair, that raised, that was, that rose right to the top is one of the key problems. So I know we're, we're working on developing those programs now.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else from the commission before we move on?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, and I, I agree with you that I'm open to, uh, a discussion, you know, it would likely take place in the CRA. But also, you know, it, it doesn't hurt to have it on the city side at some point, um, to try to improve the outcomes. I think we, we ran into this kind of conundrum a little while back in the CRA where for, for a brief minute there, we looked into the possibility of educational scholarships or, or partnerships, um, to try to, to get people job training or trade skills or even, you know, just, just any money for education. Because at the end of the day, it's not feasible to hire unqualified or unskilled people for jobs that require technical skills. So I'm, I know we kind of hit a brick wall in the CRA with the legality of, of scholarships. And, you know, the South Tech isn't located in the CRA, but, um, as the city manager kind of pointed out, we, to me, my solution moving forward is to find a way to pay to train people before they apply for these jobs, not have them apply and then expect the project to take unskilled labor and, and put them on dangerous work sites. So I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent on the, on the need to, to get creative and find some solution to, to help train or educate people. I think that education, you know, I'm biased, education is the solution to a lot of this. And, you know, I take that challenge seriously and I think we should step up and try to sort that out.
Absolutely. And, um, you know, one of the things that came to my mind is the, the trade unions. Um, you know, we do not mandate having, uh, unionized workers at these sites. I know that a lot of the trade unions that I spoke to, they do a lot of the training on their own. And that is something we may want to look into, uh, in the future. It means that things will be more, it may, I'm not going to say guarantee, that things may be more expensive. However, it's something that the city or the CRA will hopefully be able to pay so that we have, uh, the unions who used to do all the training, help with the, the training of our residents.
Yep. I, I agree a hundred percent. And, um, and what I'll do, it's Yep, I, I agree a hundred percent. And, um, and what I'll do, it's public meeting, so I'll kind of speak to it real briefly for 10 seconds. I know that our, our local trades unions have apprenticeship programs where they, they don't care who you are, what you are. If you come in and work hard, they'll train you and, and get you certifications and skills. And you know, they'll make sure when you get hired to work on job sites with them, you're getting, you know, living wages. There is a, not a, not a bill, but you know, an ordinance out there that mandates in certain cities or CRAs, a percentage of the, the work site needs to be trained apprentices, which basically forces you to hire people who have gone through these union programs. So I'm, I'm absolutely in favor of looking at that on the CRA side. Because it's going to cost more money, like you said, to bring in skilled local labor. But the CRA has funds explicitly to try to bolster local economies and hire people. So I'm, I'm right there with you and I'll try to get a hold of that ordinance that exists in other cities. And I believe at the county on some level for an upcoming CRA meeting, that's a great idea.
All right, thank you. Anything else from the commission? Saying none. Sophia and your team, Michael with Career Source, thank you. And David Scott, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
No, 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 Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to present. As Sophia mentioned, the contractor information was provided, I believe it was last June as an update to the commission. We're concerned to send that presentation back out to everyone. But I think everyone ended up in a very productive discussion about how do we close that deficit and it has been education. And we certainly would look at different programs to provide that opportunity to our residents.
All right. Well, thank you. And we still got some work to do. And now we'll go on to the, the added agenda item regarding our mega food distribution for Feeding South Florida. I, I guess, Ty, would you like to have some information regarding that?
Sure. As everybody knows, every Thursday morning from nine to 11 approximately, we are at the Boynton Beach Mall, working with Feeding South Florida and Christ Fellowship, along with our city employees, our police department, doing a food distribution. That's about, you know, eight hundred to nine hundred families fed every Thursday morning. We're talking eggs, milk, vegetables and fruits here. And this is supposed to last a whole family for quite some time. So this is not a single meal. And we've been doing these on Thursday mornings and for this week, we will not be doing it on Thursday morning. We will be doing it in set on Saturday, same time, nine to 11, same place, Boynton Beach Mall. So this will be a mega food distribution event, not eight hundred families. We are aiming at five thousand families. So this will be a phenomenal support to the community. And I can't thank enough Feeding, Feeding South Florida, as well as all of our city staff and Christ Fellowship for making this all possible. We're talking about for every dollar that's given to Feeding South Florida, about seven dollars worth goes back into the community in terms of food. And that's a phenomenal ratio. So if you're interested in volunteering, please come on to the Facebook page. If you go to the city website or the city Facebook page, there's an event page there. There's a link to volunteer. We're going to need some volunteers. Again, nine to 11 this Saturday, five thousand families. And it will surely be a blessing to the whole community.
All right, excellent. Thank you. All right. Is there any other announcements before we move on to public audience? Seeing none? Public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record. And this is for items that are not on the agenda or that are for items on the consent agenda that you would like to, to talk about. So we'll wait a moment for everyone either to raise their hand or to ask a question. And I will rely on John McNally to make sure that we don't miss anyone.
Mayor Grant, I have Erwin. And I am sending an unmute request. Erwin, you should be good to go.
Erwin, are you there? He may have not been paying attention.
I can come back to him?
Yep.
Okay, so let me have Mark. Marziliano. You've been unmuted, Mark. Or I'm sorry, Matthew.
Yes, hi. You guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Matthew Marziliano. At one twenty-two Southwest Fourteenth Ave. Had the honor to speak with a couple of commissioners over the last few days. This is in regard to the seven eleven proposition.
Yeah, we're going to speak, no, that, we will have an open air public audience or public hearing. And will you be having more than three minutes to speak?
Oh, okay. Then I will. Sorry about that. Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome.
Okay, I'll mute his phone. We'll try Erwin again.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, this, this is not Erwin.
Okay, who is this?
This is, this is Tori.
All right, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Tori Orr, four oh seven Northeast Seventeenth Avenue, apartment one oh one, Boynton Beach, Florida.
All right, you got three minutes.
Okay. Um, I want to say something about that job fair, you know? It was, it was, it was a total disaster. About a hundred and forty people. And Justin Katz talking about it's okay. Ain't but eight people get hired. And it's already built up. And then you telling me they didn't need no labors over there on Seventh Street with those apartments? I was over there myself. I seen labors over there with shovels in the air. Like, how, like, how much, we going to take in our community? We constantly getting slapped in the face with job fair after job fair. And then ain't nobody, ain't nobody, y'all got jobs. I lost both of my jobs right now. I'm still looking. Ain't nobody calling nobody. Why they ain't called me yet? I'm, I'm still in the computer. My phone ring every day. Why they ain't call me? I'm a skilled laborer. I put my paperwork in like everybody else. You know what I'm saying? But I didn't get picked. We, and, and, and it's not about Boynton Strong, it's about the whole Boynton. Don't try to, ain't nobody from Boynton Strong get hired. We know that. Sophia made that very perfectly clear. Came to our neighborhood, got all them names, said she was going to bring her the back jobs. She would guarantee another job over there at Carolyn Sims Center. She guaranteed jobs would throw haze to us. And I got people in our neighborhood to cry right down and tell you that. She, she came in our neighborhood and say, I guarantee you these jobs. Give me your name, your social security number. You're going to be working by Friday. There was a wind tonight. She came and did that. Came in there with her Afro, with her Afro puff, with her, with her African beads on. Okay, my time up?
You got a minute twenty left.
You know what I'm saying? That wasn't fair. That wasn't fair to, that wasn't fair to the community. Then we, and they get what we, they're crowded again. Ain't nobody getting hired for all this money being spent in Boynton Beach. Over a billion dollars y'all brought here. You ain't putting a penny in district two yet. Over a billion dollars you brought here. And we can't claim, say we got none of that. That ain't fair. Foreigners coming here getting all the money. We, we Americans like everybody else. Why we can't get no money? That's sick. That's what it is. It's sick. And then for us to get treated how we got treated yesterday as a company, that was disgusting. But I forgave that because y'all straightened that. But I didn't like that one bit. I did not like that how we got treated yesterday because we get sponsored by Feeding South Florida as well. And we feed the children in our neighborhood too. For us to get treated like that, that was real disgusting. That was real disgusting what we got treated. They'll, I bet they'll come out into the mall tomorrow and tell y'all that.
It's not on the mall tomorrow. It's on Saturday.
Okay, well, they gonna come tell y'all that Saturday, what they told us on the hill yesterday. Y'all have a good day with, I'm, okay, I'm, I'm a listener. What y'all got to say?
Tori. You know, I don't necessarily know what's going on. We had the conversation that, correct, the, the job fair did not work. The goal was to get people hired and less than 10% of the people got hired. We're not going to give up and hopefully you will not give up as well. We're going to have to figure out new ways because what we thought, what, what we thought or what we were perceived to would work, did not. And so this was a mistake on myself, the commission, because even though we had an opportunity, they said, well, it was the lack of skills of the community. And I guess not necessarily the, the fact of the, the day laborers that they were looking for. They were looking for skilled laborers and not day laborers. And I think that's something that we need to fix in the future. All right. Is there any one else from the commission that would like to speak? Saying none, we will move on to the, the next attendee.
Mayor Grant, I do not see any other hands raised or questions in the, in the chat section.
All right, excellent. So going once, going twice, going three times. We are moving on to administrative. Public audience is now closed. So advisory board appointments. We have two regular and one alternate available for the building board of adjustments and appeals. One student non-voting for the education youth advisory board. One regular and two alternate for the historic resource preservation board. And we have one applicant, Thomas Ramicchio. And I would like to nominate him for the, the regular position.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. We have three regular and two alternate available on the library. And that is it for administrative. Moving on to consent agenda. Would anyone like an item to be pulled from consent agenda? I would like to, for item B, number 11, to discuss. Do I have anything else from the commission regarding the rest of the consent agenda? Saying none. So we'll go with item B 11. This is for the purchase of radar controlled speed signs. I was informed that there's starting to be installed. And I received an email that they are working. And I want to thank our city engineer and our public works department for doing this. It's a traffic calming measure. And hopefully we can install more of these so that we have less people speeding. Because sometimes if you're going on a straight road at night, you don't realize you're going more than 25 miles per hour. So may I have a motion to approve item six B?
Sue move, Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Saying none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda, consent bids and purchases over a hundred thousand.
I'd like to pull seven A.
Okay.
So this is regarding the unarmed roving security guard contract. My, my question here, first of all, is the police chief available?
Just, just a second.
All right.
Michael Gregory, you have been unmuted.
Michael Gregory, police chief.
Hi Chief Gregory. I wanted to ask you about the nature of these jobs. Could you tell us a little bit about what these individuals will be doing? Because I, from, from what I gather from just the few things I've read, they are part roving security and part welcoming team. And could you just speak to, you know, what kind of roles they may be playing? How many people we might need and the qualifications that, that's involved in this?
Well, certainly. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address it. I'm sure if you had questions, many others do as well. So I always like to have the ability to, to address these things. As, as the commission may recall, last summer, they, you asked for a presentation of our security plan for increasing security and police presence in the town square area and over in the greater downtown that we want to ensure security and protection and higher levels of police visibility. At that point is when I first approached the concept of increasing, or I should say adding a ambassador type program for our use in the downtown area. With its main core being, or function being in the town square, city hall, amphitheater, corridor area to ensure safety, security and, and high levels of visibility for, for folks who are visiting and are looking to move throughout that, through that area. We've worked with that into the budget this past year. And we worked with our team to evaluate how those programs are working in other communities. They've garnered much success. As you may recall, in fact, the item tonight is a piggyback off the city of Pompano Beach. I believe Boca also use the service. I know the city of Fort Lauderdale use the service and several cities in Miami-Dade County also. So it's a much more aesthetically pleasing way of providing security services than the traditional armed guard that kind of just stands like you might see walking into a bank or into some high level security function. So the actual tasks that we'll look for them to do are varied. And we're not exactly sure exactly what, how many, how much of that time we're going to need. We do want to increase that presence. We do want to increase that visibility. We know we don't have apartments. We know we don't have a parking garage downtown yet. So we want the ability to scale these services up. So via this contract, we're creating a, a bucket, you might say, of hours that we can tap into. We know we want visibility. Once the city hall is opened, we know we don't want vandalism on our brand new property. We know we want people who are visiting to do business in the city or in the lobby to feel comfortable and safe. So we will actually have a position in the lobby that will be staffed by one of these guards. We know we've had historical challenges in the library with kids that come and maybe misbehave or have horseplay and, and other folks who were residentially challenged and they want to camp out there for a period of time. So this will be a, a milder and gentler way than having the police on station and on guard in the, in city hall all day, using these ambassadors to help rove the city hall building, rove the grounds, intervene before a problem arises to the level that police interaction is needed to. If there are kids, asking them to move along or let them know that there's no skateboarding in a particular area perhaps, or no vandalism, or graffiti. In this low, lower cost, as we need it, pay as we go model. Now that's what I'm. So rather than, we know at some point in the future, once we're, we're, we have more density down there, we will need more police officers on a larger number. But that may not be today. Place, those residents aren't here, those businesses haven't sprouted up yet. But we do need to create that high visibility, safe area so people will come there and want to come back again and again to take, to take advantage of the amenities that'll be provided along, along oceans such as our new arts installations. We'll be having art walks at some point. More activities I imagine will be planned next year into our, our beautiful amphitheater area that'll be over there. This guard service ambassador program will be a way that, to supplement the police services that will be out there as well. In addition to the tasks they'll be involved in, we will be having obviously security, the city commission meetings in the, in the actual commission chambers of the new building later this summer hopefully. And we will be needling, needing those, utilizing those services to help us with the commission meetings and channeling of folks from where they are parking over to where they'll be attending the city commission meeting in the chamber. So we'll have the ability of having the parking lot guarded, presence in the, in the chambers as well as officers that are roving through the community as well. And, and we'll still have our traditional sergeant at arms at the meetings, once we go. Physical meetings also. So again, this is a bill, gives us the ability to pay as we go, leverage lower cost, more aesthetically pleasing security services that are professional, professionally trained, licensed through the state of Florida, that will indemnify the city, that hasn't their own liability insurance and personal injury insurance and all the other requirements that we typically expect of a vendor. more aesthetically pleasing security services that are professional, professionally trained, licensed through the state of Florida, that will indemnify the city, that has their own liability insurance and personal injury insurance and all the other requirements that we typically expect of a vendor who we service for us. And and then we, this is what we've been planning for and proposing for. So it's finally coming together and taking shape. And we'll hope to have this in place for when we move into the new building.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that explanation. That was pretty thorough. And I'm all in support of, you know, having more security and having an ambassador program. These are all good things and the need for it, you know, it's undeniable. We're definitely going to need it. You know, the reason I asked about this is, you know, I'm struggling to understand the need to have these services contracted. Is this something that's could be done in-house? Could we hire our own ambassadors? Or or what is the, what is the argument for having this done through a third party? What are the pros of doing that?
The argument there, I would say, is the fact that we can start tomorrow. So we don't have the training current, we don't have the the establishment of a job description in the city, the funding of that position in the city, the hiring process that would need to take place, the vetting process to have them have this type of a security role and to be very strict in vetting that would need to occur. And then bringing them onboard into that role in a more of a full-time basis where they have salary and benefits and pension. This gives us the ability to to crawl. I mean, at some point in time in the future, we very well may need to bring on FTEs and back out of some of the contracted hours and bring them on full board with the city as police officers or or CSOs or something of that nature. But this gives the ability to start small and grow into what our need will be. It also gives the ability to evaluate how big a need there really is because we they were kind of going to the unknown with the programming of the buildings and the and what will hopefully be additional business in the Long Ocean.
How many people are we talking about? So let's say, you know, what does it say here? Not to exceed 150K per year, right? So about how many people will that cover?
Boo. You got me on that. I can get those numbers to you tomorrow, probably. But what we were looking at was more was more hours. We looked at how many commission you were and how and we looked at probably two security staffing folks for the hours, maybe an hour before and an hour after the commission meeting. We looked at the CRA meetings and how many of those will occur? And then staffing that with two security staff personnel an hour before through the meeting and an hour after. So we looked at hours and potential use of those hours for activities on weekends and prime time for for groups to congregate out there to have that presence, more so than looking at like full-time 24/7 personnel. That's not what, that's not the direction we're going right now. We're really looking at at just staffing either events such as art walks and other types of activities and high visibility presence of groups in the in the area and city functions at that building. And then, of course, when the library opens, having someone roving and being the check-in person when you walk in the front door of the lobby, those are scheduled hours. So the hours that City Hall is open, we'd have a person scheduled for those hours from the security contract. So it's really, like I said earlier, a bucket of usable hours. If we don't send them for those services, then we won't have to exhaust all those funds. It's just a placeholder for us to start with. And I expect it'll probably, it'll probably be a lot less going through October.
I'll close with one final question, Chief. You know, our town square isn't exactly ready, so it's not, it's not like we're going to be needing these individuals tomorrow. What is the nature of the contract and and the hiring process? And for example, is it possible for some of our local people to be hired? Or they already have current employees and we're only using current employees? Do we have any say about who they hire and local hiring in their contract?
Okay, that's a great question. So they are a contractor to ours as such, very much the example of the crossing guard contract and other contractors that we use. So we can't control and don't control their hiring. We don't control the salary that they get paid. If they have these in their staffing, then they they do whatever their internal business process is to fill their vacancies. Again, we're looking at at scheduling of hours. So again, this is pay as we go. If we don't, if we will get, if we, with your blessings, we get this item approved tonight, we'll be in, we'll get the contract executed. However, there's no cost to us until we actually schedule them to be there. So even though we are getting this done now, if we don't have anything that we need to extra presence for before the very first city commission meeting in the new building, then we won't have any costs until they're there. We pay after they, they'll submit their time sheets to us of of the hours they spend on site. And then we'll pay based on their time sheets submitted. So again, there's a large number on the on the contract, but that's a maximum not to exceed amount. We'll be using a lot less of that, obviously, through October. But again, it's not just for commission meetings, staffing the library with, not staffing it 100%, but roving the the building, visiting the library, visiting the parking lots. Some of them are a couple of steps away from the building, so we want to have visibility over there. So our vehicles are safe, the public's vehicles are safe. Their and their travel as they traverse from the parking lot over to the the main building is visibility. So again, we'll only pay for what we use and we pay based on them submitting their their time sheets to us.
Well, sounds good. And thank you so much for your thorough explanations. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Any other questions from the commission or comments? Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
Chief, I just want to thank you for your foresight and Lori as well for thinking ahead on this and trying to also do it in a way that is cost effective and won't overburden us here in the city. And it's very, very important for us as we try to open up, well, when we eventually open downtown to have residents and visitors feel safe and feel secure. So this is definitely important, and I commend you guys for doing the research and getting the right team on board. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So my question is, is that you mentioned CRA events. Will the CRA be reimbursing the city for these security guards?
We can certainly review that opportunity based on if it's a strictly CRA function, something, you know, like that, we can, I guess, some like you're making over at the marina or something like that. We can certainly look at doing, that was the flexibility. We can, we can use them how we see fit towards the purpose of providing security in our our city.
Well, that's kind of my, you know, Lori, I you raise your hand, that's.
He covered it. That's exactly right. It's a conversation we'll certainly have at the CRA.
Okay. Yeah, that's, you know, it's a CRA contract. I think it's better that we go through the city so that we are not limited to the CRA district. You know, sometimes people want to have special events, whether a brewery or something like that. And so this is something that we can use, kind of like with the Feeding South Florida at the Christ Fellowship. My, I guess my main concern is, is that, you know, I, there are certain high crime areas in our city. Would they be used for that area as well?
No, we'll, we'll still look to utilize our regular patrol services and for fighting crime and and known issues like that. This is more so for nonviolent disturbance, quality of life type issues that are addressable by a security guard type person.
All right. And I understand the the benefit of a third-party contractor with their own insurance liability, protecting the city from their employees. However, I would like, you know, within the the three-year contract for us to see about hiring CSOs so that we can have the city of Boynton Beach Patrol itself.
Yes, sir.
All right. If there's no other further comments, may I have a motion to approve? Oh, Commissioner Romulus, yes.
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to put my two cents in here that I wasn't necessarily on board with having the CRA have to reimburse the city for the use of these security guards, especially being that the CRA will already be paying the city upwards. I may be wrong on the numbers, but I believe it's 3 million a year to, you know, for for downtown. So I believe this is all kind of just collectively beneficial to both entities. I don't think we necessarily need to investigate looking into trying to get them to reimburse for that.
It's it's more of, yeah, for our Pirate Fest, we hired our own security guards to supplement the police. So rather than going out to a third-party contractor, using the contract that the city already has, is what, unless the CRA gets a better deal with someone else, that's one thing. But if we can't to use utilize the city's contract, is something that I think would be beneficial. So if there's no further questions or comments, may I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you. I got a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent bids and purchases over 100,000?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing. Jim, I know that we have a lot of, and John, I know that we have a lot of people that would like to speak on this item. And I guess Crystal as well, that there's people that have written in. So I'm guess, as we move forward with this meeting, with these items, I'd like to do it how we do in the the past, is that we open it up, the the first option for the applicant to speak, allow for the the commission to ask any questions of both the applicant or city staff, and then open it up to public comments. After public comments, the city commission can make their final comments before a roll call vote. Does that sound good with everyone? Yep. I got some head nods. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Point of clarification, this is Brian Seymour. Is there maybe a need to cross-examine the interviewers based on the information received late today? Will that also be provided as an opportunity if need be?
So the, yeah, I believe the applicant has the opportunity to answer any questions after the presenters. So you will have the opportunity to speak first and to speak last.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mayor, I have unmuted the phones of Josh Long, Brian Seymour, Brandon Wolf, Neil Campbell, and Shane Lasko, who I believe will be presenting. And if you give me a second, I will bring up the applicant's PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. And while we're doing that, Jim, can you read the proposed ordinance number 20-005 and 20-006?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance 20-005 and ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for property commonly known as 711 property and described herein owned by the Southland Corporation. Changing the land use designation from low density and medium density residential and local retail commercial to local retail commercial providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
And.
Ordinance 006, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02013 to reason on a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as 711 property from R1A, single-family residential district, R2, single and two-family residential district, and C2, neighborhood commercial to C2, neighborhood commercial, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Mayor, there is four items involved in this matter. The first item, which is the amendment to the future land use element, is a legislative matter. But there is, there are two, really, there are three quasi-judicial matters. If people want to testify with respect to those, they need to be sworn. I'm referring specifically to the rezoning of the property, the conditional use in the master site plan modification. The procedure that might work best would be for me, while people have their microphones muted, to ask them to swear or affirm that they will testify truthfully. But when they each speak, I would like to ask that they identify themselves and then indicate and confirm that they have previously been sworn. Members of the public who think they might wish to be participating in this matter, even if you're not certain, it's easier to get sworn in this group swearing in than for me to have to swear you in one by one as you go. So Mayor, may I start now by just asking everybody to swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Even though we can't hear you, again, we will confirm when you each testify that you have been sworn. Mayor, you could proceed now with the balance of the presentations.
All right, thank you. And also for the applicant, you have item 8B as well. And so if you would like to speak regarding the the two proposed ordinance along with the the site plan so that we can save some time and not do it all, do it separately, if you're okay with that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. We were happy to try to get all this through in one shot without repetition of the same things over and over again. For the record, my name is Brian Seymour. I'm an attorney with the Gunster Law Firm. We're here on behalf of the applicant. I have been sworn. We have several folks with us. You heard some of those names, most of those names. Brandon Wolf, who is with 711. Brandon is a real estate expert. He works on acquisition and evaluation of sites for 711. Shane Laxo with Creighton Construction and Development, the developer of the upgraded facilities that you're going to see tonight, and who is also a planner. Neil Campbell, who is an environmental specialist with Aptim, A.P.T.I.M., is also with us in case there are any questions or issues that arise for that. He's not going to be part of the initial presentation, but some folks had raised some issues previously, and if that comes up, he can touch on that. And most importantly, Josh Long, who is the project planner. Josh works with my firm but is not an attorney. Josh is an AICP certified planner. He is an expert. We have submitted resumes for our experts in their field that we emailed over to staff as part of the record for tonight. But if you do have questions about their expertise or experience, feel free to ask, and they can get through any of that. As Mr. Chairop noted, three of these items are quasi-judicial and require expert testimony on most of these issues. So I'm not going to be doing that. But as Mr. Chairop said, there are four things. One is legislative, the comprehensive plan amendment. And the other three, the rezoning, conditional use in site plan are quasi-judicial. Each of them being intertwined to get to the overall goal of an upgraded site for this 711 that would also add gas sales along the frontage of Wilbright. So we're going to present that overall project. Each element of your code is identified and discussed in the materials that were submitted with the application. We're not going to go in grave detail on every single thing. You have that in addition to your staff report. But I would like to hand it over, and I think we should go two slides forward at this point to Josh Long, who is the project planner for this particular project. So if we go one more, and then Josh, if you can pick it up.
Sure. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name's Josh Long. I'm AICP certified, land use plan with the Gunster Law Firm. For the record, I have been sworn in. It's my pleasure to be here tonight representing 711 on a brand-new store on a corner that I believe everybody is very familiar with. This particular intersection, there has been a 711 convenience store there for exactly 60 years. These are just some of the summary slides here. I'll be getting more detail on these as I go through. Just a couple of key points, in Palm Beach County, traffic is requiring a 30-foot right-of-way dedication on Wilbright. 711 plans on upgrading the entire site with a modern convenience store and gas station. And the neighborhood isn't supportive of the project based on the neighborhood meeting we had with the neighbors. Next slide. So we, as we do with all of our 711 projects, 711 is a good corporate citizen, and their neighbors are their customers. So it's very important that they always start out on the right foot and get input from the neighbors on any expansion or renovation that they're doing. The first thing we did was we sent out mailers. We also used the local Forest Park Neighbor Association email blast, and we did a neighborhood meeting at the First Presbyterian Church on February 19th. We had about 25 neighbors attend the meeting. And the majority of those neighbors were in support. So we did get a letter from Doug Brugman, the Neighbor Association representative after that meeting, that the vast majority of the neighbors that were in attendance were in support of the project. And once again, this goes back to 711 has been in this neighborhood, disturbing this neighborhood for six decades. So the neighbors were very excited to see their store, because this is their convenience store, finally getting that remo- finally getting that remodel that they deserve as neighbors. Next slide, please. So what you have here is an aerial of the site. Next slide. As you can see, this next slide here, you can see the convenience store as it sits on the corner. Seacrest is on your right. Woolbright is on the bottom part of the store. So as you can see, there's really no landscaping around. Next slide, please. And on this particular side, I'd like to pause and really go over quite a few things on this. So this is a shot from Seacrest, looking at the east side of the store. And as you can see, many things in this image. The first that probably pops out is that all you see is a cement building. There's no landscaping whatsoever. The second thing that pops out is access, the ingress and egress to the site. It's a continuous curb cut, almost the entire length of the property. You see the dumpsters that are currently adjacent to a multifamily duplex right now with absolutely no buffering, no screen walls, there's no architectural features. The site is typical of what you would find 60 years ago. And that's okay, because 60 years ago, the zoning and land development regulations did not have all the new regulations that they do for new convenience stores and gas stations. And this is why we're bringing forth this project, is we're bringing forth the new model of convenience stores and gas stations for this community, which provide all of the current zoning and land development regulations that are required in the city. Next slide. So here is a view from Woolbright, the same situation on the other side of the street. I think this one's a really good indicator of the hazards of the pedestrian environment. You can see the sidewalk that's directly adjacent to Woolbright. You have about two feet of grass, and then you have the actual street. Then on the other side of you, you have vehicles that are traveling in and out of the very poorly designed travel lane. You have an access point that is right next to the intersection with another access point that actually is on the other side of you. So it's a very unsafe pedestrian ingress and egress pattern. Next slide, please. So here's a front shot of the actual 711. There's absolutely no architectural feature at all. Next slide, please. Here's a shot of the rear property wall. Once again, no landscaping. There's no dumpster enclosure. There's absolutely, you know, no current amenities offered with this existing store. Next slide, please. Here are views of both of the architectural features. Once again, just a complete brick wall. Next slide, please. So I think these are very important shots here, and I'll pause a little bit on this. So this is looking down Woolbright. And what you have, there are two different curb cuts that go onto Woolbright. This, I've been doing professional planning for nearly 20 years, and this is one of the worst examples of an ingress and egress I've ever seen. It's very unsafe for pedestrians. It's unsafe for motorists who are coming to the store, who are leaving the store, who are trying to navigate internally to the store for bicyclists, for pedestrians walking. It's just not a very safe environment, and this is one of the major upgrades that we're providing with our new application. Our new curb cut and entrances, which I'll go over later, we comply with all the city's traffic standards and ingress egress land development standards for actual design. Next slide, please. As you can see, this is the Seacrest frontage. So the slide on the left is looking north on Seacrest, and the slide on the right is standing on 14th and looking south on Seacrest. Once again, sidewalk, actually, the sidewalk is the ingress and egress curb cut on Seacrest for the property. There is no sidewalk there. So you are actually walking in the designated drive aisle for the cars. Next slide, please. So here are the shots from Southwest 14th Avenue. Once again, we have shots looking, the view that is on your left is on southwest looking east. View on your right is on southwest looking south again. And once again, this is to show you the current sidewalk environmental aspect of what people experience as they walk down the street on both sides of 14th Avenue. Right now, there's hardly any landscaping or trees or anything to be offered to the pedestrian walking in this area. Next slide, please. And so here are the two duplexes. And once again, the acquiring these duplexes allows us to provide all the amenities, the landscape buffers, the enhanced architecture, all of the new site amenities that comply with your current zoning land development regulations. As you can see, these are both duplexes that don't have any architectural feature contributing anything to the architectural importance of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. And so with this slide, I'd like to just pause and say, why is 711 doing this? So real quickly, and this is one of my favorite slides, I'll admit it. The lady on the right, she's just having a blast buying an apple. I love it. But this, this image is important because it represents what has happened in this industry as a whole. So the entire industry for gas stations and convenience stores has completely changed over the last 10 years. The land use patterns have completely changed. The model has changed. The demonstration of need for convenience stores has changed because consumers' requirements have changed. They no longer just want a place where you can get gas and a pack of gum and a drink and get on your way. They now demand more. They demand fresh foods, salads, and fruits, and gourmet coffees, and select for those neighborhoods that want specialty ethnic foods. We offer those. Once again, they also require high aesthetics, enhanced architecture, you know, very attractive inside features, you know, with the food bars and the design of the, not only inside but the outside. They want a new modern convenience store. And these new modern convenience stores at 711, they function more as a neighborhood market than they do a convenience store. And that's the new model that we have been bringing forward. As Brian mentioned before, we represent 711. We've represented them on about 50 or 60 of these over in southeast Florida over the last five years, because 711 is coming in and they're changing all of their existing stores where they can. And this is one of them that deserved to be changed because it's been here for 60 years, it's contributed to the neighborhood, and it's time that they get the upgrade, the neighbors get the upgrade that they deserve and that they demand. Next slide, please. So this is a two-part slide. So as you can see right here, this is the front of the existing store. Click, please. And here is the architectural of the new facade. So as you can see, we have a new building that's aesthetically pleasing. The earth tones are sustainable in that they reflect heat. We have white roofs. We have other. This particular building meets several of the requirements for enhanced sustainability, even though we're not large enough that we require that, the building actually provides that. And that is part of the new 711 model. They have these stores that are highly efficient and that are very attractive in architecture. You've got the foundation planting, so the landscape in between the sidewalk and the building. You've got the, you know, the actual parking in front of the building with designated drive aisles. Next slide, please. So this is a corner of Southwest 14th and Seacrest, so you're looking south. So this is what the residents of the neighborhood see today as they're leaving their neighborhood. And next slide, please. This is what we're proposing as the new corner piece for the neighborhood. And it was this slide in particular that when we met with the neighborhood back in February, they were very excited about because they recognized that this is a focal point for their neighborhood now. Now, this is something that they can be proud of, and then they see that this could be the catalyst for other redevelopments in the area. So they're very excited for, you know, what we have provided with this particular, you know, renovation. Want to pause on this slide as well. Your staff has been great to work with. We came in knowing that we had to go above and beyond and really contribute a lot for this store in regards to the architecture and the landscaping. And so we've worked with your staff to come up with the multiple layers of landscaping, the flowering trees, the butterfly-attracting shrubs, everything else that you see in this slide. Next slide, please. So here is a before and after on Southwest. Next slide, please. So this is the rear of the store, and this is very important to distinguish. So as you can see, this building has four-sided architecture, meaning most commercial buildings have no architecture on the rear or maybe on another side that's not facing a street. So with this particular building, because we knew of the importance of the building for the neighborhood, and we knew that the building itself is going to serve as a buffer between itself, the neighborhood, and the Woolbright and the gas pumps next to Woolbright, we wanted to make the building very aesthetically pleasing and have architecture that you would believe would be a front facade of a building if you were walking along. We also provide the three layers of landscaping, and we have three layers of landscaping to enhance the buffering of the store and the gasoline station because each layer represents another layer of buffering. So you've got small shrubs that buffer from 0 to 24 to 36, and you've got medium shrubs that take up that 36 to 72 inches. And then you've got larger canopy trees and palms that take up the 72 inches to, you know, the above, to the top of the roof and the parapet. Now, the building's only 20 feet high. It's well below the maximum allowed code. And the majority of the height in the building is actually the parapets, the faux walls that are around the building, so you don't see any of the air conditioners or other equipment. So what you see is only a building. You don't see any of the back of house stuff. Next slide, please. And so here's a view on Southwest 14th, looking east. Next view. Next slide. Next slide, please. And so once again, this is the new experience that residents from the neighborhood, as they walk from their houses to the store, which they've been doing for 60 years. This is the new view that they'll be experiencing. Rather than the, you know, two very small little palms that are there, now you have multiple layers of flowering shrubs and palms and shade trees, which create a much more attractive environment. Next slide, please. So real quickly, we happen to, you know, be right next to another gas station. And this slide, these slides are really kind to show you the older model of gas and convenience stores and what the new model of gas and convenience stores, showing that this neighborhood is going to get one of the new models, the new cutting-edge type of gas and convenience stores that are coming across southeast Florida, that are coming across the country. You can go up and down anywhere in the state right now, and you'll find these new modern convenience stores. This is the new model. So we're very excited to be able to bring this to Boynton, so Boynton can have one of these, you know, signature new models of the convenience stores that are offering these kind of enhanced features. So as you can see in the right, this is the old type of model where you just simply had no architecture on the rear of a gas station convenience store, as opposed to the rear of our convenience store, which has the enhanced architecture all the way around the building. Next slide. Once again, the front. And here we go with our slide where we have the architectural features, the variation in height and the bumping out to different features to give it a more 3D element, the canopies, the awnings, the foundation planting, the palms framing the building, all the new architectural features which make this a very attractive building compared to the old type of model, which was simply nothing more than just the store that offered nothing else. Next slide, please. And once again, I think this slide says quite a lot on what the old version of the gas convenience stores would allow for rear buffering and what we are providing with our rear buffering. As you can see on the right, there's a particular gas station. You have pumps in a convenience store that can be seen directly from the adjacent residential with, you know, a five-foot landscape buffer and very small trees. Whereas with our particular model, we have a 20-foot landscape buffer with multiple layers of trees and a building that actually shields the fuel pumps from the adjacent neighborhood. Next slide, please. Excellent. So what we did was, we wanted to just go through the City of Boynton to show that this particular development pattern, this pattern of having gas stations and convenience stores adjacent to residential, it is an established development pattern within the town. And one of the reasons that this is an established development pattern within the town is because the town is 100 years old. And the plats that were created, 100 years old, 90, in fact, our plat, in fact, our particular property, it was planted 95 years ago, 1925. So in 1925, a commercial lot on a major street could only be 115 feet wide because you didn't have landscaping and buffering and all the engineering requirements and everything else. So what you have throughout the city is you do have gas stations with convenience stores that are directly adjacent to residential. Next slide, please. As you can see, the pattern is established there because the city was developed on old, you know, developed, old grids and plats where you didn't need larger commercial tracks. Today's development patterns require much larger lots. In fact, if you, if you just go down to Congress in Woolbright, there's another commercial intersection that's a little bit newer. It's further west. It wasn't developed. I didn't have the older plats that the newer, the older part of Boynton does. You know, those, that four-corner has four commercial properties, and they all are between 200, 225 feet in depth because that's the current standard that you need to provide all the extra amenities and zoning requirements that you have with today's gas stations. So the expansion of our project for the other two properties allows us to meet the today's current zoning standards and bring forth the type of building that Boynton deserves. Next slide, please. And so with this slide, this is the one that's directly across to us. As you can see, this is another example. We just showed you five examples. And within the immediate area, all were residential directly adjacent to gas stations with convenience stores. And four of those five have the dumpster and the refuse actually directly adjacent to the residential, the only one that didn't, is the station that had the two frontage of roads, which was, I believe, on Southeast 4th. So once again, just establishing the existing land use patterns there. Next slide, please. So here's a 3D rendering. We just did this of the landscaping around the store because this is really important. The landscaping does continue around the corner. This slide was just designed to show the emphasis that we've placed on the landscaping between us and the adjacent residential. So you do have this thick landscaping go around all the way to the corner, all the way down Woolbright. It does, it does exist in the same kind of, you know, thickness that you see here. Once again, this is a 3D image that shows you the multiple layers and the great distances of buffering that we're providing. Next slide, please. So real quickly, here's the proposed site plan. Just want to walk around a couple of the key elements. The first is if, you may recall, some of the first slides that I showed showed the ingress and egress pattern for the existing site constraints. Woolbright, the intersection's right next to the corner. Seacrest is right next to the corner. So with our proposal and meeting all your requirements for distance separation, our intersection for Woolbright is 151 feet from the corner, whereas Seacrest is now 115 feet, which is a dramatic improvement. We also have the sidewalks are now separated with landscaping, so you're not walking along the actual street. As you can see, the, we have stacking internal, so people no longer have to back out into traffic. There's the circulation around the pumps, so people can circulate freely. We providing all the code required parking. And next slide, please. And with the landscape plan in particular, this particular site had one canopy tree and eight palms. With our proposal, we're going from one canopy tree and eight palms to 37 canopy trees, 19 medium-sized trees, 30 palms, and over 1,100 shrubs, butterfly-attracting plants. Next slide, please. So real quickly, I just want to go real quick, how, and show that how we do comply with all of the standards for the future land use map amendment and rezoning. The demonstration of need. There are new projects coming into the area, Riverwalk Plaza and Town Square, potential expansion of Bethesda Hospital. The Palm Beach County long-range transportation plan does show increased capacity and increased annual growth in the area of 1.24, 1.4%. Also, it's important to reiterate Also, it's important to to reiterate that the entire gas station with convenience store market has changed. There is a need to provide the new industrial model and this is being done throughout Southeast Florida and the nation. The project is also consistent with your future land use amendment and rezoning standards, particularly objective one point one seven. Which deals with the city's pursuit of economic development policy one point one seven one, which steals with creating jobs, contributing to the tax base. And one point one seven point six, which limits the conversion of existing commercial land uses to other land use. The current zoning land use patterns require commercial lots with over two hundred plus feet of depth to accommodate the design requirements associated with today's commercial developments. And the city has established the land use pattern to build gas stations adjacent to residential shown earlier in the presentation. We are providing a Palm Tran bus stop, so we are going to work with, you know, we've already gotten the confirmation from Palm Tran, we're providing a ten by thirty, so we're gonna have a a brand new, modern bus stop on our site. So that helps with our sustainability. Also, the the project itself, we're utilizing LED lighting, our landscaping is attracts, we have butterfly attracting trees. The the amount of shade tree is going to reduce the heat island effect. We our flat roof is painted white, we're utilizing cool colors for the body of the building. We're also, you know, providing, all sod and landscaping is going to be a hundred percent coverage with a hundred percent overlap from automatic irrigation. And once again, the new convenience stores are much more energy efficient than the older stores like the one we're placing today. We do have long term capacity for portable water and sewer, that's already been confirmed by the utility department. You know, the the LRC future land use in the neighborhood commercial C two match the current designations of the existing store. And all the lots facing the north side of Woolright Road between Southwest First Street and F B C Track, so that does show compatibility. We are providing the appropriate screening, type three landscape buffer and the other compatible and compatibility enhancing features. Will prevent any, prevent the negative impact upon adjacent residential property values. The reclassification rezoning from residential to commercial designation increases the amount of land generating economic development benefits for the city. The the subject reclassification and rezoning increases the amount of land available for commercial development. There aren't any alternative sites that meet the code requirements that would allow for enhanced property as described. An area that will continue to serve the needs of this community. Excellent, please. And currently, the subject property does not have safe and functioning primary points of ingress and egress as shown several times on the images. In fact, the driveway on Seacrest actually serves as the sidewalk and serves as the back out lane for Seacrest. We're, you know, meeting the code requirements for distance separation for driveways. We are providing all the required off street parking, fourteen parking spaces and our loading space, we all meet the code requirements on that. Our our refuse and service areas, our dumpster has been proposed in the northwest corner of the property. Which is compatible with the development patterns of the other gas and convenience stores in the city. Refuse area is screened by an enclosure for itself at seven inches or seven, seven feet, four inches. And we do have landscaping between it and the Jason's properties. We also have an additional sixty feet of clear that's provided to ensure efficient traffic pickup in the drive aisles. The screening buffering, the proposed landscape has been designed with an emphasis on screening aesthetics and sustainability throughout the use of dense native drought tolerant plants. Our type three buffer complies with the city's requirements and the buffer's been designed with a six foot tall decorative wall. A variety of landscaping shrubs that provide a very aesthetically pleasing and significant buffer. We have agreed, staff has some conditions that we've agreed to. One of the the conditions is that at time of inspection of the landscaping, if it's not doing the proper job of buffering. We have agreed to add more landscaping. Staff has also made us agree to install more mature species. We're not installing the little toothpick trees that you see on some developments that are only eight feet tall and, you know, as wide as our finger. These are going to be mature trees at installation, so you get the screening effect added at time of opening. And staff has already put a condition when that we agreed that if they're not happy with the screening at installation, we will enhance that. The proposed photometric plan that we provided has four light poles with LED lighting. They all use cut off designs and the light levels comply with the code requirements and are close to zero around the perimeter of the property. We comply with all the setbacks with zoning. And with the compatibility of adjacent properties, the impact of gas stations, considering the upgrades. Provided particularly are less impactful than some other potential uses such as group homes, independent car washes, restaurants, theaters or radio and TV broadcasting. And also, it's important to note that we have agreed to do a self imposed condition of approval. Limit alcohol sales so that they do not occur between two AM and six AM. And so, we the overall economic effects of the property, the proposed convenience store and gas station uses on Jason nearby properties in the city as a whole. Will be minimum, other than the enhanced condition of the property with the upgraded building and site features, which generally hence the neighborhood. Provide added security and safer traffic flow, although which enhances the surrounding properties. And also, the project provides commercial retail services, which have been provided at this location for over sixty years to the residents of the area. The project will not create any smoke, odor fumes or toxic matters that would create a negative impact on the neighborhood properties. Fuel stations are subject to federal and state safety standards, which provide protections from the nuances and hazards of fuel. While convenience store activity takes place entirely within fuel enclosed buildings. Once again, if you have any questions in regards to environmental aspects, Mr. Campbell from our team is here to answer questions after I'm done. And the proposed dense landscaping of trees and hedges around the perimeter property should be sufficient to prevent noise associated with operations not become an issue. And with that, I thank you for your patience. I know I said a lot and I really do appreciate your time on this. I'm gonna go back to Brian for his closing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. If we go to the next slide. Oh, and the next one. He covered those two. There we go. So, as Mr. Chairoff mentioned, there are four items within these two different categories, the landings and zoning and then the site plan and conditional use, all of which they, there's a lot of overlap in that Josh has provided you that summary and that information. That this in fact meets all of the relevant code requirements. This is gonna be a significant enhancement to the community, really to the entire corridor. It's the beginning of the future of Woolbright and the beginning of what could be the future for Seacrest. In fact, it might encourage others to upgrade their properties as well. Competition breeds greatness. If if other folks didn't do what I did, I could sit back, relax and show up and be the only guy on the block and everybody would have to hire me. But I have to work extra hard to do the best that I can. As we come into a market, as the community gets better served, as the gas price is lower, as the community service is done. And as these upgrades are enhanced, others may feel the need to join us and do some similar things and provide for the community in a similar way. So hopefully, this is a catalyst event for what could happen to really upgrade this whole corridor and this whole neighborhood. We are happy to answer any questions you have. You can go to the next slide if you would like. If there are any issues arise during the remainder of the hearing, we would like the opportunity to address them at the conclusion of public comment. I understand there is an interviewer and I suppose maybe after the interviewer is done, we can if if we needed to deal with any of those specific issues, we'll take them in the order that you'd like us to. Thank you very much and we ask for your vote on all four items.
Alright, thank you very much, Brian. So now, I'm going to go to the commission. Where if they have any specific questions for the applicant or for city staff. To, you know, state who they're speaking with or asking their question or comment to. And Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Um, I'll I'll defer on this one just because I know that typically the districts that it's adjacent to get the most public input. So I feel like I might get more information out of listening to the district two and three commissioners first if they're willing to go. Since they have a close relationship with their constituents.
Okay, so Commissioner, hey, would you like to begin? Still gotta unmute.
Sorry about that, I keep doing that. Okay, good, good. I have just a few question, I probably just kind of yawn or something before I got the, what you said, but how how tall is that wall on the north side of of the property we talked about? How tall are you gonna make that? Is that an eight foot or what? You know the one I'm talking about on the north side of the property?
Yes, this is Josh Lawn for the record. The wall on the north the the wall on the north side property is six feet tall.
Six feet? Yes, okay, okay. And and also, I think I missed, which side of the road was the Palm Tran bus stop gonna be on the Seacrest side?
Yes, this is Josh Lawn speaking, it'll be on Seacrest, that's correct.
Okay. And, okay, let's see, now how, how do you plan on? I know there's a condition of approval for the if you don't measure up to the buffering. You're gonna add more, I think that's what you said. How how is that going to be determined? Who's gonna measure that? Is that gonna be complaints from the the residents or how's that gonna be determined?
Now, Commissioner, the, this is Josh Lawn speaking, the the condition has been awarded that at final inspection. So so we have to get a landscape permit and that landscape permit has to be inspected to make sure that we comply. Install landscaping that we have to on the landscape plan. So at a time of inspection, that's when it will happen and that's a very important distinction. Because we'll be waiting to get our certificate of occupancy for all of our permits to be approved and finalized. So that's a very important condition in that we we can't get our final CO until we close out our permit. So it's that time of inspection, so we'll make sure that everything's up to what the city wants before they issue us the certificate of occupancy.
Okay, I'll reserve my question for right now.
Okay, Commissioner Romulus.
Yes, so I know that we're gonna be getting a lot of public comments and and everything. So I'd like to just wait to hear the public comments, I already know where I stand, but I'd like to just still allow for public input before making my my remarks.
Okay, Vice Mayor, do you have any remarks before we open up to public comments?
Yes, I I have a couple of questions and since we do have public input coming in, I'll defer most of it. Brian, when we spoke, I told you that one of the things that's really important to us is having security cameras. And in addition to having security cameras, we are building this real time crime center in our new police department building. And it's really important that we're able to access footage immediately. I don't want a police officer to come to your store and say, can we have access and wait three days to get access? And the perpetrator gets away or whatever it may be the case. Are you still willing to work with our police department to have that kind of cooperation? Where our real time crime center can tap in and work with you to your camera system, so we can get footage immediately to help our cops?
Absolutely, Commissioner, thank you very much for bringing that up. Seven Eleven is extremely committed to security. They have some of the lowest incidents in the country for similar products. And one of the reasons is their their lighting systems and their security systems. And we have spoken and they would be more than happy to work with you and really the police chief and his folks to make sure that they have the access that they need to the security systems. So that they can provide additional additional security for the community.
Fantastic, and so I I suspect you'll be hearing from our chief or his office pretty soon.
I'm easy to find.
Right, I I wanted to also ask you about the storage tanks in in this proper proposed storage tanks. And this property, I've received a lot of emails from residents and some of the most disconcerting. Let's call it concerns, were somehow that your tanks were unsafe. And I'm just trying to understand what is the nature of your tank, what kind of standards you're held up to? And how can you assure us that these are are safe for the community?
So, there's a lot that goes into that, Commissioner, and that's a critical issue. If I'm gonna ask if while I'm answering the first part of that question, we can have Neil Campbell unmuted. Neil is a an expert in this area. I can tell you unequivocally. There are both state and federal standards on the tanks that have to be met. All these tanks will be new tanks, they're, Neil could get more into the detailed double wall tanks. They are twenty four seven remote monitored. They have all kinds of additional safety features that I'm not even gonna try to explain, but Neil certainly can. But these are the most upgraded, safest tanks that go into these properties. In some cases where you've seen redevelopments of gas stations over the years, one of the things that's been happening is those upgraded tanks. And Seven Eleven's safety record, like its security record, is far enough. So if Neil is is unmuted, he could probably give a little more detail on that as well.
Yeah, hello, my name's Neil Campbell and we're Captain, I've been sworn. Yeah, so the tanks that are put in nowadays, over the over the last twenty years, the state of Florida has gone through a series of upgrades. Make sure that the tanks don't have issues or the systems don't have issues. And this all stems from a main factor of the the Federal Clean Water Act of the Florida. More stringent, so you can start with that, if you don't know, your drinking water all comes from the groundwater. So, anything that impacts it is an issue. The state has spent hundreds of billions of dollars in funded cleanup for leaking tanks. Where the old steel ones put in forty, fifty years ago. The current ones are double wall fiberglass, they have interstitial monitoring between each layer of fiberglass. There are most audible and electronic alarms on them, there are physical barriers to stop tanks being overfilled. There are then exits which stop the the food and fuel exit in that way. I mean, there cannot be enough put into these at this point in time. And what's more important is there's a lot of monitoring of it, there's a lot of constant electronic monitoring and record keeping. Which can be checked and is checked by Palm Beach County, which is a subsidiary, through a subsidiary system with the state. And there are independent contractors by law through Seven Eleven that visit the stores every single month and check on them. So there are an awful lot of systems in place to keep them safe.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, Neil, and, you know, those those things you mentioned, are these industry wide? The reason I'm asking is that we do have another gas station right across the street. And I'm I'm curious what the differences are in terms of safety.
All 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 stations are required, there's several dates throughout the system of operating that have gone through. And they should all be in compliance, they cannot receive an operating permit without being in compliance.
Okay, this is from the state.
This from the state, yes, and it's handled through Palm Beach County as a local agency.
Alright, well, thank you, I'll end my questions until we hear some public input.
Alright, so my quick question is, um, litter receptacles on the the southwest northeast corner. On the northeast corner near the the bus station, will the property have those? For the the people, pedestrians on the sidewalk?
Josh, that was one for you, I think.
Yes, so the the outdoor receptacles are around the store. Are you, are you asking for us to put one next to the bus stop, is that?
That is, that would be a request that I would like, if your client is willing to do that. I know that walking along Boynton Beach Boulevard and Seacrest, there's numerous trash and there's not enough receptacles. And so that's something that I would request. I know that you have one, probably one right next to the store, so when people come in. But if you get people at the bus stop, I think that'd be very beneficial for the environment.
We we, I I mean, I Brandon's on and I'm sure that he could tell you if he would like. But I'm trying to talk a little slower, I'm sorry. That we can certainly accommodate trash receptacle by the Palm Tran stop.
You know, it was a very informative presentation. The only slide that I saw that was missing was the one from from your first slides. The one from Woolbright View onto the property and the one from Seacrest onto the property. Uh you really didn't show the the gas station, uh the gas pumps, except for that three-D vent uh rendering. And so we're kind of missing a little bit of what the the whole property is going to look like um with without those views from Wilbright and Seacrest, because that's where most people are gonna see it, not necessarily on the other side of the the gas pumps.
Yeah, we 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 did try to focus, Mr. Mayor, on the residential side of it for sure. Um we can see if I can maybe put something together before the the next hearing. I don't know how long it would take, what would take, but we'll see if we can't put something together.
All right. If if it's easier just to send me a an email with it, uh I'd be or the the commission an email, that'd probably be the easiest way to do it.
Okay.
And we can put it part of the 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 record afterwards. Um and that was for the applicant. Um I sent an email to our uh police chief regarding the the traffic incidences and crashes on that intersection and the the police calls for that property. Um Chief Gregory, or uh do you have that information for me? Or city manager?
Do have. Can you hear me?
I've I forwarded the email commission. We got it late this evening, so I just sent it to all of you probably five minutes before the meeting. So if you if you wanna check your email, you'll you'll have it right in there.
Okay, well, um.
And the chief can speak to it.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. If you wanna speak towards it, speak to that.
Certainly. So the inquiry had to do with the number of crashes at that intersection of uh Wilbright and Seacrest over the last several years in the report. Uh in two thousand fifteen, there were four. Two thousand sixteen, there were eight. Two thousand seventeen, there were nine. Two thousand eighteen, there were eight. And two thousand nineteen, there was only one. Last year, there were none.
Okay.
With regard to crime, I was also asked about the crime uh uh totals that location. Um again, uh two thousand from May of two thousand fifteen to December two thousand fifteen, which is a partial year, there was twelve. Uh two thousand sixteen, there were ten. Uh crimes occurred on the property. Two thousand seventeen, eight. Two thousand eighteen, there were fourteen. Uh two thousand nineteen, there were eleven. And so far, this year in two thousand twenty, there have been three.
All right. All right. Thank you so much for that information.
Well.
All right. Um I think we will now move to uh public comment. Um I think it would be easier if we have the uh intervenor go first. And then everyone who would like to speak, raise your hand. And so that we can go. Normally, it's gonna be uh through an alphabetical order. So um I think believe that Neil is the the intervenor, Neil Schiller. So I'm going to unmute his uh microphone and allow him the the first uh opportunity to speak. And it seems you're Neil's self-muted.
Um and and Mayor, this is John McNally. I believe he provided a a presentation. Would you like me to load that at this point?
If you have that a presentation available to load, yes, please.
Okay.
Mayor, this is Jim Sheriff. Just a reminder that under the quasi-judicial process, and Mr. Schiller also has the opportunity to cross-examine any previous witnesses.
Okay.
This is Colin Gruff. I'm working with Neil to get his sound on.
Okay. We'll give him another minute. Otherwise, we're gonna move on to anyone else with their hand raised.
Yes, he said move on to the public. He will work on his problem and get back.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um John, uh you mind if I uh go ahead and do this? And the the first person that I got is Trevor Rosenkrantz.
Yes.
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city commissioners. I'm Trevor Rosenkrantz, seven zero three Southwest Fourth Avenue. I thank you for allowing me to speak on this important topic. I've had the pleasure of serving on the City's Plan and Development Board for the last five years. In that, as may have noticed, I have not come to speak before you, which hopefully speaks to the importance of this project and its potential impact on our residents. Gas station design is beautiful. I commend the design team on such a great looking design and presentation, but frankly, the location stinks. Gasoline stations produce benzene. The EPA has classified benzene as a known human carcinogen for all routes of exposure and especially inhalation. The National Institute states that exposure to benzene increases the risk of developing leukemia and other blood disorders. Allow in the matrix zoning districts to follow the code that the gasoline stations should be permitted use as if located two hundred feet from the boundary of a residential zoning district. This is measured closest gasoline pump island or the canopy of the gasoline station to the closest boundary of the residential or mixed-use zoning district. Things that were presented to us, and I'm not sure that they were in this agenda item, show a pump island fifty-eight feet from the residential boundary to the northwest. Canopy forty-four feet from the residential boundary to the northwest. And the underground storage tanks that vent that vent location is less than fifteen feet from the western boundary and sixty-five feet from the residential boundary to the northwest. I agree that this site needs an upgrade badly. The residents deserve an upgrade at this location. And Seven-Eleven does deserve the credit for remaining a viable source of convenience for residents for the last year. But if you drive by those properties right now that abut the properties immediately downwind of our prevailing southeast wind right now, you'll see children's toys in the yards and maybe even some kids playing in them. This gas station will emit benzene. Every single public health entity agrees that benzene causes cancer and long-term exposure will cause leukemia and blood disorders in children. I believe the city should seriously consider the risk of placing a point source for benzene so close to our residents. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker we have is Matthew Marzalano. I will unmute you now. Are you there, Matthew?
I am here.
All right. Please state your name and address for the record.
This is Matthew Marzaliano, uh one fourteen Southwest I'm sorry, one twenty-two uh Southwest Fourteenth Ave, Boyton Beach, Florida, three-three-four-three-five. My house is the one that uh all the numbers they're saying adjacent to and, you know, fifty feet from, that's my house. Uh you know, I I don't really wanna jump on the benzene bandwagon here, but that is one of my primary concerns. Uh you know, I I I found it interesting that that Josh Long kept pointing out, uh you know, that we're gonna bring this, that that the current building is up to the standards of six sixty years ago. You know, that sixty years ago, this was standard. And then, you know, this this whole neighborhood was built sixty years ago. Uh you know, and then he shows pictures of houses that are typical for that neighborhood. Uh there's not a lot of landscaping in this neighborhood. It's not a newer complex. It, you know, most of these places are basic homes for you know, working people. Uh this isn't a gated community. So, yeah, yeah, everything's gonna look like it. It's not new and polished, you know. And he keeps saying how how we're gonna bring this up to to modern standards, modern standards. Then he points to a bunch of gas stations that were built sixty years ago before we had modern standards. We have a two-hundred-foot setback for gas stations as a modern standard for a reason, and that's because we determine that it's not safe to put gas stations directly adjacent to residential neighborhoods. And what they're asking you to do is go, okay, we're gonna do all this good stuff, but ignore this. And that doesn't make sense. Uh you know, you had queried about the the tanks. My my concern isn't the the safety of the tank a- as they described, which most of those have to do with watered standards. Mine has to do with venting. When you have a a semi-empty tank of a volatile liquid, it fills with vapor. When you refill that tank, all of that vapor vents. That's why they have a vent. And it vents into the atmosphere. And there have been numerous studies on the benzene levels around gas stations. Um you know, they they have measured uh benzene levels that are above short-term, one hour expo recommended exposure levels uh at up to five hundred and twenty-five feet away from gas stations. Uh they determined that the the setback regulations, the estimates used for setback regulations, uh there there were about ten times off. They're they're producing ten times more gassing than what setback regulations originally estimated. Uh and you know, a- as the other gentleman said, you know, chronic exposure benzene can uh really has a lot of issues with uh blood and white blood cells. Uh it has been proven definitely causally can benzene causes leukemia. Uh it's not a causation. It's not a link. I mean, it's I'm sorry, it's not a uh correlation. It's been proven. You know, I I understand that there are some benefits for the community. Uh but trade trading the health and well-being of a group of residents for some revenue and beautification and convenience, it it is not a trade-off that I would morally make. You know, the the World Health Organization says that there is no acceptable level of benzene. Yep, and you know, they they keep talking about this corner, you know, he's talking about the ingress and egress and how it's it's a danger, it's a danger. Those traffic numbers, the accidents that were read off, sound like they would probably be typical for most intersections, major intersections in in this city. Uh looking at their plans, they could actually change their e- ingress and egress for the existing building to match where they are on the plans. You know, ninety percent of his presentation, as you noted, Mayor Grant, was convenience store. And that's the presentation he gave to the the Neighborhood Association, which I was at. And I was never asked my opinion as to whether I approved this, so I I'm not sure where the neighborhood had got the, you know, approval to say that the neighborhood is behind it. And even if the twenty-five people there were unanimous, that's twenty-five people out of how many people in this community? The bus stop's the first thing I've heard of. This is the first time I've heard of that. Um there's already a problem with people coming down Seacrest, cutting through uh the neighborhood, particularly Fourteenth Ave. What do you think they're gonna do when they see a bus stopped at that intersection? You know, uh he said that, you know, no smoke odor or fumes that were dangerous to the community. The the that's I'd have to disagree with. Um you know, the science says that when you have gas tanks, you have vapors, and the vapors contain benzene. And there's no mitigation of that. You can mitigate the traffic. You can mitigate the crime. Maybe you can mitigate the property values, which are probably gonna go down for the houses closest. But my house, which is now directly adjacent to this property, I'm gonna be inhaling their vapors on a twenty-four-hour basis. Uh they've done a study of um gas station workers and found that they had increased chances of cancer and other negative health conditions. And they were basing that on an eight-hour-a-day, two-hundred-and-fifty-days-a-year estimate. I'm gonna be there twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. Um yeah, he talks about that that if, you know, if the buffering isn't enough, we'll put more. But that's gonna be assessed at the final inspection before occupancy. How will you know the buffering is enough when you're not even in the building yet? There'll be no traffic at that point. There'll be no lights on at that point. You know, I understand that growth is the future, and I have no problem with additional commercial development. You know, if they were gonna take those two houses and put it into a a small professional office building and operates on normal, you know, nine to six hours, I wouldn't be arguing about that. If they were just talking about expanding the convenience store, which, if you notice from his presentation, it's ninety percent about how we want a convenience store, convenience, convenience. You know, modern convenience store. Very little is mentioned of the gas station. Now, e- even even anyway. So, you know, I'm not against the commercial development. I'm not necessarily against you know, some rezoning for certain types of commercial. But I think an additional gas station and asking us to roll back our standards to sixty-year-old levels so that they can put it in, it it is not a a reasonable compromise for the the residents of that neighborhood. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Moving on to our next uh speaker. We have
Mayor Mayor Grant, if I might. Uh Mr. Neil Schiller. I believe his issues are resolved. If you would like to go to him?
Uh you know, he he misses a spot in the line, so he's gotta wait.
I can wait till the end. Whatever is your pleasure.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So we're gonna have Susan Oyer.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yep, Susan Oyer, one forty Southeast Twenty-seventh Way. Thank you very much for letting me speak. Um I want to say I grew up in this neighborhood, two different houses. No, I'm lying. Three different houses in that neighborhood as a child. So I know the neighborhood very, very well. Um I also want to acknowledge that I do sit on the P and D board and heard this prior. Um my issues, I I first say the building, design, the landscaping are beautiful. Um I I I think this idea of remodeling the Seven-Eleven is fabulous. Um a a lot of people don't know, my first stepfather was actually one of the managers there, so I spent a lot of time there as a kid. I actually got to go work back in the freezers when I was a child. It was great fun as a kid. I used to go there and drop off all my cans and all my glass to get my change back when they used to give deposits on on aluminum. And that's how I supplemented my allowance as a kid. I think it's great. But I will say, the neighbors not all want this. Um that was evident at the P and D meeting. It's evident on Facebook. Um again, I desperately want this remodeled. I think their plans are amazing, but we do not need another gas station. Shell gas station across the street, and bear in mind, I drive by this one to four times per day. Um the gas station across the street is empty, maybe one to two cars max, unless there's a hurricane situation. It's empty. There's two more gas stations within approximately a half a mile. One on Wilbright and Federal, so just down the street. One just on the other side of I ninety-five, the racetrack. And then, of course, the Wawa is opening soon. There is absolutely no need for yet another gas station. But yet, there is a need to remodel this Seven-Eleven, and I think it would be perfect to remodel it. Um let's um I also object to the encroachment of the commercial onto or into this residential neighborhood. Um someone from planning, one of the staff said that, oh, this is the future. Um you know, we're gonna end up making all of Seacrest and they're gonna just push people out of their houses. And that wasn't hit this person's statement, that that's my statement, not not the staff member's statement. If you extrapolate that, that means that you're looking to put commercial all the way up to the northern part of the city, which I don't think any of us want. Um I think there's have been residential neighborhoods for sixty-plus years, and they need to stay residential neighborhoods. People complain about the the speeding on on Seacrest. They complain about people being hit crossing Seacrest. But then you wanna turn around and make it commercial, which would just raise the speed, but that makes no sense. Um the people who live in this neighborhood don't necessarily all want it to be this gas station. But again, we all want the remodel. We just don't want the gas station portion of this. So if we're able to bifurcate that, which has been the word of the day on prior commission meetings, that's something you need to look at. Is, I don't think anyone, again, objects to remodeling the 7-Eleven, the new landscaping, improving that, you know, the entrance is an access to it. I think we've all, if you've taken Wilbright and headed west to go to 95 in the morning, you've almost rear-ended someone at least once or twice a week as they stop short to either go into the 7-Eleven or, you know, the person in front of them is stopping short. So while there may not be a ton of accidents, it doesn't mean it doesn't almost happen daily. I think a gas station would make that worse, and that's without the whole environmental impact of the gas station. Just looking at the economics of it, it's not needed, there's not a demand to support a gas station. But yet, we all will acknowledge the economic benefits that come from a remodel of this. So thank you for your consideration, and please consider bifurcating this and allowing the remodel of the 7-Eleven, denying the gas stations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jim, I did swear in.
Thank you. Our next hand raised is Ed Bries. You are now unmuted. Have you, please state your name. Huh?
Ed Bries, Planning and Zoning Administrator. That button was pushed accidentally, I apologize.
Okay, so I will mute you and move on. Ed, you still there?
As long as, yes, as long as you have me on here, I just want to clarify some of the things that Susan brought up.
Do you mind confirming you're sworn in? Do you mind confirming that you've been sworn in? Ed? What happened to you?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
You guys have questions for staff at this point, or you want to let the public finish?
Let's let the public finish, and then we'll go to staff. Thank you, Colin. All right, next we have Ally Poo.
Hi, guys.
Hello, please state your name and address for the record and confirm you've been sworn in.
This is Ally Poo, I reside at 111 Southeast 11th Avenue in Boynton Beach in Forest Park. I do not think that I was sworn in earlier.
All you have to do is say I was sworn in.
I was sworn in.
There you go.
Thank you. So I'm a resident in Forest Park, and although I definitely the health and well-being of the citizens of Forest Park are first and foremost in my mind, I am for the 7-Eleven being there. Living just a few streets away from there, it is not only an eyesore, but it definitely doesn't demonstrate what the neighborhood is striving to become. We bought in this neighborhood because of the promise of the entire downtown Boynton Beach area being renovated and upgraded. And as a result, the neighborhoods are supposed to be, you know, upgrading and and following suit. And with that comes development, with that comes growth. It's a part of the community when you're seeing an elevation of a community. And I can personally attest that I don't go to that 7-Eleven because it's not comfortable, whether it's for traffic or whether it's for the interior. I don't go there because it's not a comfortable feeling. And also, as others pointed out in the presentation, I'm a victim of theft in the neighborhood. And having that extra security or extra footage or extra cameras would greatly add to helping catch culprits and hopefully decrease the amount of criminal activity in the neighborhood. As far as some of the comparisons to the Shell station as to why people don't go there and it's not necessarily needed, people don't go there because it's price gouged, it's the only gas station in that area. So therefore, it can keep its prices whatever they want, and no one goes there. It is also a beacon for crime, where I think it was last year that there was a shooting at the Shell station. These are not things that the residents want, these are not things that we need. And especially if we want to continue with upgrading and elevating the community, I think that, like I said, the health and well-being of the citizens, I definitely have concern. But I also would like to push forward with the project so that we can continue with elevating our community of East Boynton Beach. That's all that I have.
All right, thank you so much. Our next is Assad Alom. And after that is Bill DeVries. Assad, can you hear me?
Mr. Alom is self-muted, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Hello, hi.
Yes, we hear you now. Please state your name and address and confirm you're sworn in before you begin.
My name is Assad Alom, and I'm resident and homeowner of 2655 Southwest 23rd, Granville Drive, Boynton Beach. And I already sworn in before. And I agree with Matthew and the other residents, what they have objection on the environmental aspect of this business. However, I would like to add a few things to it regarding the environment is if you look at the annual summary of the State of Florida and the ground story stacks, they have inspected 3,999 UST facilities, and out of 53% had were in compliance, and 47% of those gas stations were out of compliance. 129 confirmed UST releases means they have discharged with the fuel and gasoline. So I think, you know, there is a lot of developments going on. But I don't think in 7-Eleven, need to expand their gas station due to the vent issue, because if you have a 40,000 gallons of gas under the ground, I don't know if anyone knows it or not, but 40,000 gallons, normally, any gas station in Palm Beach or Broward County, that much amount of gas they have in the ground, and you have like too many resident homes and houses right behind the gas station. So it's not, it's not an option to have a gas station right 10 feet of your neighboring houses, people live there, kids live there, and you have a gas fumes and the air quality has been compromised due to this, due to this gas fumes, right? So, and now the other thing is, if you look at to the violation in Palm Beach County itself, in from 2019 January until May 5th, 2020, 264 violations have been gas station. So it's not like if you are environmentally compliant or not, all of the gas stations in South Florida are double wall tank. They all have all the safety measures, but still, there are spillage, there are fumes, there are gas discharge underground storage tanks. So, so right next to the houses, you don't build a gas station. You do not change the zoning of existing commercial real estate. Yes, I agree with the 7-Eleven plan, they all talk about they have a big C store and they wanted to make it bigger and nicer. I've been to this 7-Eleven many, many times in the past. They all say everything, 7-Eleven business model is if you, if one 7-Eleven selling sandwiches and apple and fruits and tobacco and beer and every 7-Eleven does the same thing, so what difference does it bring to the C store? I said, nothing. They're already selling coffee, they're already selling fruits and sandwiches and everything, but he's marketing. But the fact of the matter is, they need to demolish this whole building. They need to uplift their image being a C store. If you look around the, this 7-Eleven, there is no landscaping, yes, they needed a landscaping. They needed a new C store, but at not the cost of the public safety. Then your house and your neighbor's house is like 10 feet to the neighbor. So it's not, it's not the Bible option in my eye, and I think, I think we should not have. And there is another option, other thing I wanted to mention is, there should be in one and a half mile radius, how many gas station do you want? I mean, one gas station is shallow there, the other gas station is on Federal, the other racetrack is over there, the Chevron is there, the BP is there. How many do you want? I mean, that many gas station are more than enough for this local residence. You don't want a gas station? If 7-Eleven care about the people, they need to have a proper image of their C store. They need to build an enclosure of the garbage, garbage is overflowing all around the property. There are homeless sitting around their properties, that's they need to change. And they had, they already offering all the food items, what they're planning to offer, when they're going to build the new new 7-Eleven, they're not going to do anything different what they're already doing right now. And they did not talk about the gas station expect, but, you know, I mean, they have to change the building, but not at the cost of the publicity. And I thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. I believe the next person that I had in line was Bill DeVries. I'll unmute you now, and then after that, we have Salmon Rivala. Bill DeVries? Are you there?
Mayor, Mr. DeVries is self-muted.
Yep, I see that, and so we'll give him five more seconds. And after that, we have Salmon Rivala. All right, try to go to Salmon Rivala, are you there? Yeah, you are unmuted, Salmon. We're having trouble.
Yes, this is Salman Rivala, I have
All right, appreciate it, please.
I imagine.
Yep, we can hear you now, please state your, you stated your name, please state your address and for the record and confirm that you've sworn in.
Yes, this is Salman Rivala, again, address is 7411 Champagne Place, and yes, I have been sworn in. I just want to start off by stating for the record that this isn't about opposing 7-Eleven per se. What this is about is simply the impact of our community and the community that we all work in, and we try to raise our families. Second, the obvious opposition is of course related to the environmental impact. I'm going to keep my comments very, very short because what's already been said on the noise and pollution implications. But my concern really is the traffic flow. And I'm not just talking about the cars ingressing and egressing from the store, but it's the foot traffic that I'm concerned about. Frankly, as a parent of young children, it's something that concerns me. I know we heard Commissioner talk about the video cameras and the security measures that may take place, but that doesn't prevent crime from happening, as we all know. Third and lastly, you know, as a member of the professional community, I would say that I'm worried about the impact on the current businesses that thrive in our community. There are, as a previous speaker mentioned, already several gas stations in the areas, in the area. So as members of the commission, I just wonder what you all are considering on the proposed impact of this ordinance on existing business communities. So, you know, in summary, if I'd like to just state that, as you consider, you will consider three things. The impact on the environment, the impact on the economy, and the impact on our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill DeVries? Give me one more second. Yep, I can hear you now.
I apologize, my phone went into lock and I couldn't unlock it and turn the mic on.
That's all right, we got you now. Please state your address for the record and confirm that you've been sworn in.
Bill DeVries, 130 Southwest 13th Avenue, I have been sworn in. I appreciate you allowing me to speak. I also sent all the commissioners an email, so you kind of know what my thoughts are. What I would like to say today is, I've lived here for about 50 years. And I understand how 7-Eleven was before. Publics used to only, you know, it used to be open at a different timeframe, it was even closed on Sunday, it wasn't open late. So 7-Eleven was very vital to our neighborhood. And, you know, convenience, you may need whatever you may need in the evening. But things have changed. Quite frankly, if right now people can get food, food breaks, you've got so many restaurants around here, you've got the fruit stand right next to it, if you want to help local business. You've got many, many gas stations, we don't really need another gas station. And I, quite frankly, I'll be frank, I don't think 7-Eleven would probably renovate it without the gas tanks because they realized they're not going to make that much money, they're not going to make a good profit. The other point I would like to state is about the aquifer, the underwater, the underground river that's really close to our fence. And it's special, the water treatment plant right next door. I didn't even think about the fumes, which is going to be venting, particularly when they fill the tank. And the other point that I noticed is their presentation in the beginning looked really good, but it didn't show how close the houses are on 14th. They had all green around it, all grass or something, they didn't even show the real house. So, guys, as a resident here, and I really love this town, love this community, I was always brought up here and everything, it's not a good idea. We don't need it here. We really don't, it's the residential area. I know you want to renovate, and you can make the 7-Eleven pretty and keep it the same size and the property the same size. But I really don't think 7-Eleven cares about that. They're only catering to the people that are going to come off I-95, they're going to put billboards and everything to get everybody coming into our community. And then you got the people who are going to buy their adult beverages and maybe hang out next door. And yeah, the police will have cameras, but they'll know where the cameras are. And I'm not to say about the graffiti that might be on that six-foot wall. I'm being frank and I'm being honest, and I really appreciate you listening to me. Please consider, if you were living in this neighborhood, what would you want to do? What would you want? And that's all I have to say, and I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Bill. All right, and so now we'll move on to Neil. John, if you could upload his presentation.
Okay, just give me a second. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioners. All right.
Please state your name, address, and confirm you're sworn in. Whoever you represent.
Yep, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Neil Schiller, I'm with the law firm of Saul Ewing, Arnstein &amp; Lair, located at 515 North Flagler Drive, Suite 1400 in West Palm Beach, Florida. I'm here tonight representing Azan Energy LLC. We are opposed to the land use plan amendment, the rezoning, the conditional use, and the major site plan modification proposed. Next slide, please. Again, we ask you to vote no on these following applications. The proposed gas station does not fit within the neighborhood due to the lack of buffering, environmental impacts, decrease in property values, and overall decrease in the quality of life. Next slide, please. Burden of proof, this is important. While your staff did recommend approval on all four applications, your planning and zoning board, after hearing the presentation by the applicant, recommended denial of all four applications. Obviously, as you've heard from the public thus far, the gas station is the major point of concern for the residents, as were for the members of the zoning board. The adjacent neighbors are single-family and commercial are opposed to the gas station. The applicant here has the burden of proof that it meets the criteria in the code. And actually, that reminds me, I would just like, for the record, to object to the applicant's expert witnesses. I've not been provided a copy of the resumes that were submitted to the city or anything else that the applicant has submitted to the city. In return, I had previously communicated with applicant's counsel about my notice of intervenor, and I did provide them a copy of this presentation in advance of the meeting. And then lastly, I would say, any decisions made by this commission on the on the rezoning, the site plan modification, and the additional use must be made on competent substantial evidence, not just a gut feeling. Next slide. So I looked at the site plan, and I see the site plan a little bit differently than the applicant. First and foremost, notice the location of these five-foot monument signs that are located directly on the site plan, yet did not make it into the applicant's presentation. These are five-foot high signs. I'll get to those in a second. You can see the new 7-Eleven store outlined in pink or purple. Just to the left of that, you see where the propane and CO2 cages will be. Those are the cages that store propane tanks for people to rent. So that is located on the side of the store closest to the residential as possible. But it gets better because even 20 feet from the property line, 7-Eleven has decided to put their dumpsters, which we'll get into. If you go further down into the site, you'll see where the gas canopy is and the six fueling positions. And you'll also see the underground fuel storage area. There are four tanks that they are proposing to place underground for fuel storage. Next slide, please. This is an aerial. You guys know where the property is. This is the property at issue. Next slide, please. I've overlaid the property, the site plan, I'm sorry, onto the aerial. So you can see the relation of this site plan to what is existing or what was existing at the time that the property appraiser took this aerial. And I use the property appraisers aerial. I thought that was the most representative of what, what is there today. You can see all of the existing individual properties. Next slide, please. These are just properties within 500 feet. Next slide. A thousand feet. Next slide. And a half a mile. Next slide. I'm gonna get into the specifics of the land use plan amendment and all the applications. I'm gonna do them individually. There is some repetition, so I will move fast. I realize the time is late, and I want to keep your attention as long as possible. This is the land use plan amendment that is being sought from LDR and medium-density residential to LRC or local retail commercial. Next slide. One of the criteria for the future land use plan amendment is a demonstration of need. And the demonstration of need must be based on data and analysis that adequately substantiates the need for the proposed land use amendment and the rezoning. While the staff report fails to completely establish a need for the new future land use category, they cite market data, generic market data, not even related to the state of Florida based on the narrative. Further, there is nothing in there about a gas station. Plenty of information about a convenience store, zero information about the need for a gas station. There's no data present to support population growth. There's no data supporting the need for additional local retail commercial at this location. The applicant does make several different arguments about the 30-foot right-of-way taking that Palm Beach County is creating for them. However, I want you to remember, when the county or any municipality takes property, the property owner gets compensated. Next slide, please. This goes to the demonstration of need. There are seven gas stations within a mile of each other. You can see where they are. They're highlighted in that teal color. You have the new Wawa all the way on the, on the left-hand side of the screen, on Woolbright, and then Wait, Racetrack, Shell, Liberty, Orion Fuels. There's a Texaco on the island and a Sunoco. Seven gas stations within one mile of each other. Next slide. There's no market need for more gas. Here, it even, there's another analysis done by the need for additional gas stations within the market area. You can see based on the one-and-a-half-mile market area, based with, combined with market area population, you get the whole area population of 33,293 residents. You can see the number of gas stations, and you can see on Row G, no gas stations, no new additional gas stations are needed to service the existing market population. Next slide. The second criteria is consistency. Now remember, I don't have to prove that they are consistent. They have to be the ones to prove that they're consistent with the existing comp plan. And based on the policies that they cited, I would argue very vehemently that they failed to show how they're consistent with the comp plan. They cite Objective 1.17, talking about economic development. Well, they didn't talk about how inserting a gas station into the neighbor could lower property values or lower the quality of life. They already have a market that maintains a competitive and diversified economy with, with 7-Eleven and the existing gas stations that are there. Policy 1.171. The city shall continue to review the development, land development process to remove unnecessary hurdles hindering industrial and commercial uses that create jobs and contribute to the tax base and accommodate market trends. Well, A, there's no specific market trend cited related to putting a gas station across from another gas station when you already have seven. Secondly, there's no evidence that this project creates more jobs. They didn't say how many more jobs they were creating. I didn't hear that in the presentation. And again, there's no evidence forth by the applicant to show that any increased property values of these particular properties would offset the loss experienced by the adjacent residential and commercial properties next to the gas station. And then lastly, the city, policy 1.176. The city shall continue to apply economic development benefits criteria to all rezoning and future land use map amendment requests. This applicant is converting residential property into commercial. However, that just doesn't prove the applicant's case because there's additional commercial property, so they're in conformity with 1.17. To me, they violate more portions of the comprehensive plan than they could even remotely consider becoming consistent with. Next slide. Land use pattern. So whether the future land use amendment or rezoning would be contrary to the established land use pattern or create an isolated zoning district, et cetera. This is contrary to the existing land use pattern. There is a significant intrusion into the residential area that is not present elsewhere. The medium-density residential was established to, as a transition to buffer the impacts of the commercial. There's evidence all over the city and north on Seacrest about approaching, approaching Boynton Beach Boulevard of this MDR established as a transition to buffer the impacts of commercial to the residential neighborhood. Destroying the pattern and destroying the buffer will begin to destroy the neighborhood and set a dangerous precedent that neighborhoods will be open to noxious uses like gas stations. Next slide, please. These are the uses allowed in LCR under the comprehensive plan. I'm not gonna read them all for you, but you can see none of these are as intense as a gas station. They're intense, not as intense as a gas station from an environmental perspective, from a transportation perspective, and from a security perspective. Next, next slide, please. This is a visual of the future land use map, the existing future land use map. You can see the corner of Seacrest and East Woolbright Road. I've highlighted and blown it up for you. You can see that it is a mirror image of zoning from the left, the west side of Seacrest to the east side of Seacrest, all the way from Woolbright to Sixth Avenue. You've established a land use pattern that is a mirror image of the one across the street. By, by changing the land use from, to commercial and inserting a gas station, you destroy that pattern. You give the people on the other side of the street, other side of Seacrest, the ability to go in and say, we want commercial too, which sets a dangerous precedent. Next slide. Sustainability. Another criteria for the land use plan amendment and the rezoning. Again, the staff report failed to demonstrate any sort of sustainability. Interconnect, they do say that interconnectivity will be approved with the addition of pedestrian access from the neighborhood to the north and west. However, having heard the planning and zoning board meeting, those interconnectivity access points were strongly poo-pooed. Nobody liked them. The neighborhood did not like them. The neighbors did not like them. It was my understanding that the applicant was going to remove those from the site plan. However, I did not hear that today. So if the proposed pedestrian access is being removed, again, that further is a strike against their ability to show that this land use plan amendment meets that sustainability criteria. There are no proposed gas, charging stations on the, in the gas station or at the property, even for the convenience store. And Florida does actually have the second highest electric car registration in the United States. Next slide, please. Compatibility. Commissioners, if there's nothing else you remember from this presentation, remember that this gas station is not compatible with the neighborhood at all. Neither is the land use plan amendment or the rezoning request. Comparables demonstrate how gas stations would negatively affect property values. They prove a 41% drop based on sales. And I can show you in this neighborhood on the next slide. The proposed future land use plan amendment doesn't meet the needs of the neighborhood in the city. We, they already have an existing convenience store there now. The land use plan amendment and the rezonings are, and obviously the conditional use and the site plan modifications are required for the gas station. The new gas station is not related to the neighborhood's or city's needs because there are seven in, within a mile of the site. Next slide. I looked at the property appraisers information for 104 Southwest 14th Avenue and 1504 Seacrest Boulevard. And you can see that they're the same size, the same land use and the same zoning. One, 1504, happens to be located just north of a gas station. And 104 Southwest 14th is located north of a 7-Eleven. Well, the 7-Eleven property sold in 2013 for $162,000. The property north of the Shell Station sold a year later for, can't do the math in my head, but $115,000, which is representative of 41% difference in the selling price between the two properties. One is located next to the gas station, one is not. But then I went further. I looked at November 2004, and the closest I could find on the other side was May 2001. And you could see that difference. The January 1977 $200,000 figure for the 104 Southwest 14th property obviously is much greater than the January 1974 $8,000 number from 1504 Seacrest Boulevard. That was the first recorded sale. I don't know if that was a transfer or whatnot. I wanted to put that in there because that was the first recorded sale. Next slide. So the conclusion on the future land use plan amendment is, again, the applicant failed to meet its burden. Granted, the future land use plan amendment is legislative, so it's not necessarily need to be bolstered with competent substantial evidence. The other three do, though. The future land use software, the gas station, doesn't fit in with the community, is not compatible with the community. It's 20 feet from residential, is not adequate. It violates several provisions of the comp plan and sets a very dangerous precedent for the sanctity of the residential areas. I want to just, next slide, please. I want to go through the rezoning very fast. I'm not gonna repeat slides, just gonna highlight new information. So this is the rezoning request that is before you. Next slide. Again, on the demonstration of need, the same arguments exist. They didn't substantiate a need for the rezoning. Next slide. Seven gas stations within one mile of each other. Next slide. Again, this is repetitive too. It shows no need for more gas stations. Next slide. This is the zoning map. It looks very similar to the future land use map, particularly when you look at this intersection. If you go to, and I will zoom into that in two more slides. But if you go to the next slide, you'll get to criteria for, for the rezoning. And I apologize that it says lupa on there, but it should be rezoning. It's inconsistent with two different parts of your land development regulations. One is, the purpose of these regulations is to promote the physical and economic development of the city and foster the use and enjoyment of property in a manner consistent with adopted plans, regulations, and policies. The intent of these regulations is to promote, and this is important, public health, safety, and welfare, to provide for efficient circulation, to improve the appearance of the community, to assure compatible land uses, and to preserve the resources and character of the area. This does not, is completely contradictory to Chapter 3, Section 2 of the LDRs, which, by the way, is the introduction to your zoning ordinance. The applicant has failed to show how this, this rezoning promotes public health, safety, and welfare. In fact, it does the opposite. How it promotes efficient circulation, in fact, it does the opposite. They haven't proved anything. The appearance, to improve the appearance of the community. Well, some may say that the trees may be nice, but you heard from the community, they don't want a gas station at the entrance of their community, which goes to preserving the resources and character of the area. This is a neighborhood. This is the entrance to that neighborhood. The Forest Park sign is caddying corner to the back of the new 7-Eleven. This violates Chapter 3, Section 2 of the LDRs. And it also violates Article 3.3b 1 of the LDRs that says, "The intent of this conventional district", which is the proposed neighborhood commercial district, "is to allow low-intensity commercial uses of a retail convenience that are intended to serve and which are in close proximity to individual residential neighborhoods." For a convenience store, I would say yes. But when you add the gas station, you can't look anybody in the face and say a gas station is a low-intense commercial use. It's not. You literally have to install four underground gas tanks in order to just have the gas station. Next slide. These are the uses allowed in C2. The ones with a C are listed as conditional use, and you obviously know what a conditional use is. Look at these. These are in no way, shape, or form as detrimental as a gas station. Attorney Brian Seymour said radio and TV broadcasting would be detrimental. Well, a radio and TV broadcasting facility doesn't bury gas, gas tanks. They don't vent toxic fumes into the air. They don't create as much traffic as a gas station would. So I, I disagree with my friend on that one. Next one, next slide. Land use pattern, again. There, this is contrary to the existing land use pattern. R2 was established as a transition to buffer the impacts of C2. Destroying the pattern and buffer will destroy the neighborhood. You go to the next slide. I blew up the zoning map. And again, just like I said previously on the land use plan amendment, it is a mirror image of down Seacrest from Sixth Avenue to Woolbright. You have medium-density residential along Seacrest with commercial along Woolbright. Changing this one little box. Changing this one little box starts a domino effect and every property along Seacrest will be ripe for commercial development. Every property along Seacrest will be ripe for commercial development. Next slide. Sustainability. Again, I already talked about sustainability. There's nothing sustainable about this project other than the four gas tanks that are going to be sunk into the ground and are going to be there in perpetuity. Compatibility. Again, next slide, I'm sorry. Compatibility. Again, this is not compatible with the existing neighborhood. Next slide, please. Again, seven gas stations in a mile. I've already talked about the comparable sales adjacent to a gas station. Next slide. Environmental impact. Some of the public made mention of these. I want to dig a little bit deeper. I'm almost done. So thank you for your indulgence. In 2018, Columbia and Johns Hopkins produced a study entitled, "Gas Stations Vent Far More Toxic Fumes Than Previously Thought." Their conclusions were that emissions of these vents were 10 times higher than the estimates that they originally used to determine setback regulations for schools, parks and playgrounds. And this is a quote from the study. "We found evidence that much more benzene is released by gas stations than previously thought. In addition, even during a relatively short study period, we saw a number of instances in which people could be exposed to chemical at locations beyond the setback distance of 300 feet." Obviously benzene is known as a carcinogen and a chemical present in gas vapors. Next slide. So after reading the study, I went to the site plan to find out where this proposed fuel vent riser was. Where was this gas going to be vented from the property? You can see it clearly on the site plan. 15 feet plus or minus, couldn't hardly tell, looks like 15 feet, from the property line. The single family home property is located less than 100 feet from the vent. Three times smaller than the distance that the study said was a problem. More than 30 homes are within 500 feet from the site. And again, that 2018 study actually revealed that elevated benzene emissions were, were seen as far away as 518 feet away from that particular gas station they studied. Next slide. So I looked at the rest of the site plan and I wanted to point this out. The dumpster is 20 feet from the adjacent residential property. That's on the upper left-hand side in red. You see where the proposed propane and C2 cages are? They're 72 feet from the adjacent residential property. The loading zone, which nobody has talked about, is 33 feet from the adjacent residential property and directly in front of the dumpsters. Well, I don't know how many deliveries that 7-Eleven gets, but they'll be doubled now because you'll be having a gas, a gas station there. And from the looks of it, I don't see that a delivery truck can make a complete turn. So they'll be backing up and you'll be hearing that beep, 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 because OSHA wants you to. So that's noise pollution that didn't exist there today. The fuel vent riser is 15 feet from the adjacent property. The lit monument sign, if you look on the northeast corner, I'm sorry, yeah, northeast corner of the property, proposed monument sign. That five-foot monument sign is there, not shown in any of the applicant's presentations. There are four underground storage tanks. Well, that's important because when you put a storage tank in the ground, obviously there wasn't anything in the ground there before. You introduce the potential for disaster. If there isn't a gas station there, there are no underground storage tanks and you reduce the potential for disaster. Lastly, this state requires generators at all gas stations, thanks to all the hurricanes that we experienced years ago. I don't see where the state required generator is on the site plan, is in the application. I hope that it's not located directly next to the residential area because that just adds insult to injury. Next slide. On the environmental impacts, in 2014, Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health published a study called, "Small spills at gas stations cause significant public health risks over time." And these aren't gas spills from the truck going into the ground. I mean, that's bad. These are gas spills and drips from customers filling up their cars. And they determined that over the lifespan of a gas station, the concrete pads and the underneath the pumps can accumulate lots of gas and can eventually penetrate the concrete and escape into the underlying soil and groundwater. Now, I will give you that this is over the life of a gas station. However, commissioners, what you're doing tonight is effectively starting that life of the gas station if you vote yes. You're starting the beginning of a potential environmental problem by voting yes tonight for the gas station. Next slide. So in conclusion, again, the applicant failed to meet its burden with competent substantial evidence. This rezoning where the gas station does not fit in, is not compatible. There's a lack of buffering that violates the zoning ordinances. The uses in C2 are not as severe as a gas station. And it sets a dangerous precedent regarding the sanctity of the residential areas. Next slide. I'm combining the conditional uses and the site plan modifications into one. And we only have 10 more slides, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you for your indulgence. So conditional use and site plan modifications, ingress egress, we talked about and you had asked about the crash data. Here is a visual indication of the crash data here from 2016 to 2020. Next slide. Again, off-street parking and loading areas. Okay, the applicant is saying that the six-foot wall will, and tiered landscaping provides a substantial buffer for all of the adjacent properties. Well, that six-foot wall doesn't impair sound. It doesn't impair light. It doesn't impair, you know, people jumping over a six-foot wall. It doesn't impair any of them. Neither does the landscaping. Additionally, the loading area could be, since this is a 24/7 operation, the loading area could be used at all times of the day and night. And I would submit that a gas station has many far-reaching impacts, more than restaurants, laundromats, car washes, minor car repair and car stereo installers, which are all conditional uses. Next, next slide, please. So 7-Eleven's proposed solution is this landscaping and buffer wall. But this is what I don't understand. They said they were installing mature trees, but you can see on the graphic that, again, is directly from their application, that there's an expected five-year growth of those trees, which makes them even taller, which is great. But you can see in the graphic, all of these areas of growth, they maintain a continuous hedge at five feet. That's going to grow in. Same thing on the west side or the east side of the six-foot wall. That looks like that's going to grow in. What's going to happen to the wall on the residential and commercial sides, the west side of the street of the property, excuse me, that isn't covered by, by the hedge? You're right, somebody, one of the commissioners just said it. It's going to be a great opportunity for graffiti. But again, this solution doesn't stop noise. It doesn't stop light. It doesn't stop odor pollution, nor does it stop ritter intrusion. Next slide. So this is the dumpster areas. That, part of your application is that there'll be refuse and service areas. Well, the dumpster areas are located 20 foot from the neighboring property. They're not enclosed on the top. These are not completely enclosed dumpster enclosures. Or at least it doesn't show that on the plans that were submitted. Odors and rodents aren't mitigated by an enclosed dumpster and a six-foot wall and landscaping. And again, the loading zone is directly in front of the dumpster, which again, could create more internal conflicts on an already tight site. Next, next slide, please. Screening and buffering, again, I'm not going to, I beat this to death. 24/7 use, noises. They're talking about food. Are they preparing food? Is there going to be a grease trap? What is the level of fresh food that's going to be available? And what's the level of fresh waste that's going to be generated by that? Because again, there is no top on the dumpster enclosure. Benzene emissions from leaks and spills, potential environmental contamination. Again, discrepancies in terms of the application and the specifics in terms of the five-year growth. Also, if you look, it says that the project proposed, "Project proposes a landscape compatibility buffers that exceed minimum code requirements by providing a barrier between 15 and 20 feet with tree plantings installed at mature size." Again, these aren't going to be stalled at mature size because they said there's a five-year growth rate. Next one, signs. Next slide, please. This is the picture of the monument sign. And this graphic on the lower right-hand side is a graphic right from their application. There are five-foot monument sign that's lit with a 7-Eleven logo and LCD numbers that's facing the Forest Park neighborhood. 24/7, lit up at night. Next slide. This is an estimation based on the brightness from the monument sign of properties that could, it could impact based on other monument signs in dark areas. Next slide. They talked about their photometric plan. So I looked at it and they talked about light poles. They talked about their monument signs on here. The light poles are, you have two light poles almost on the property line, on the left-hand side. And you have two light poles on the right-hand side, almost along Seacrest. All these red rings indicate a photometric reading of 2.0 or higher. So it's interesting to me that in front of the 7-Eleven store, you only have three of those rings. You have a 2.7, a 3.0 and a 2.7. Yet by the residential area on the left, you have four rings of photometrics that are over 2.0. So there's more light closer to the residential area than there is being shown in front of the 7-Eleven. And then obviously, all the other rings are clustered around this large canopy that covers the gas tank. So the gas tank canopy is 17 and a half feet tall. The height of the tallest proposed tree is just 14 feet tall. Next slide. So this conditional use, this general compatibility with adjacent, literally trying to put a square peg into a round hole. Gas station use next to a residential use is not compatible in this neighborhood. The environmental impacts with noise, light, odor pollution, the benzene and other toxic chemicals. And once it's developed as a gas station, it is difficult and expensive to redevelop it into another use. These are called ground fields. That's why gas stations are usually always going to be gas stations. Property values decrease. And again, this allows commercial to intrude into a residentially zoned area. Next, next, few more ways, I'll promise. Here's the height of the buildings. And this is my point on the height. The applicant failed to address the height of the 17 and a half foot gas station canopy and its impacts, as well as the 20-foot tall new building. So they have a building height of 21, 20 feet, one inch, and a gas canopy height of 17 and a half inches. Yet the trees proposed are only 14 feet tall. I don't see how that fits into the community. Next slide. The economic effects on adjacent and nearby properties and the city as a whole. The new gas station will lower surrounding property values. We hired Ryan Greenblatt, a local realtor, as our expert. He is, he's on the call if you want to ask him any questions or he's available for cross-examination, Mr. Seymour. But based on recent market data, based on his years of experience and based on the proximity, he believes that property values will decrease. Our expert, let me say this again. My expert believes the property values in the neighborhood will decrease with the new gas station. Next slide. Again, the applicant claims there are no impacts to surrounding properties. However, there have been numerous examples that have been proven. There are negative environmental impacts and there are negative property value impacts. Again, there is no need, nor have they proven a need or even expressed the need for an additional gas station in the area or the city. And next slide. In conclusion, the right-of-way taking, which hasn't even occurred yet, didn't require the applicant to purchase these two northern parcels to redevelop their store. They could have applied for a variance to redevelop their convenience store, which is what everybody in the public has said that they wanted. The gas station does not fit in, is not compatible with the neighborhood. There is a complete disregard for the neighborhood. Two, 24/7 operations occurring at the same time at the same site with multiple deliveries and a delivery zone very close to the neighboring residential property. A location of the northwest monument sign, which intrudes into the neighborhood. It is literally going to compete with the Forest Park neighborhood sign. It's there literally on catty corner corners. Height of the building and the gas canopy are taller than their proposed canopy trees. So tell me how that fits within the neighborhood. Environmental issues with gas vapors spreading benzene to other properties. We have provided studies that show that that is something that can occur, as well as the property value in decline. The development of the new gas station will create future redevelopments for this particular property, as I said. And again, lastly, it sets a dangerous precedent that residential property in the neighborhood, on the, on the corner of a neighborhood, in the middle of the neighborhood, could be developed into commercial property if you vote yes tonight. Which is why we zealously and sincerely ask that you vote no to these four applications. Send them back to the drawing board to come back with a, a new 7-Eleven store that is worthy of 60 years of neglect that this company has made on that store. And that is my conclusion.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask the commission if we can do a 10-minute recess. We're coming on in four hours. I know our ASL intro, like at least a 10-minute break.
May I second this?
All right, so we're going to come back at 9:30. All right, so I'm going to, John asked you to pause the meeting, if that's possible, for 10 minutes.
See what I can do, otherwise it may still be running, but.
I'll make sure to mute and turn off my video. All right, I'll see you guys in 10 minutes.
Okay.
All right, we are reconvening the meeting. So let's, so we had the intervenor. Neil, are you still there on the phone?
Let me check for him.
No.
Yeah, he, oh, wait.
I did not.
I'm here, I'm here.
Yes, yes, he is.
You are here, okay, good. No worries. So, you know, before we move on, did you have any cross-examination of the applicant?
I do, can you hear me?
Neil, or, no, no, I was going to, I'm saying it to Neil, then we'll get to you, Brian. We're going to finish everybody's comments because I did have some questions for Neil before he goes away. So Neil, are you there?
I'm here, I'm not going to cross-examine Mr. Law.
All right, appreciate it. So I'll go first, you know, part of your. Um, so, I'll, I'll go first, um, you know, part of your presentation, I saw the, the comparable sale difference. Um, but there was a thousand-square-foot difference in the improvement on each of those properties. So that could, uh, adjust it for the, the forty-one percent difference, not necessarily being next to a gas station. Um, I, I do have some more, uh, questions about your client, if you're able to, uh, ask, uh, or answer, uh, in the sense of what do they do and how long have they been doing that?
Uh, my client owns the Shell gas station, um, next door. They, um, I, I believe Shaw, uh, is on the line, um, if we want to buzz him in. But I believe he's owned, uh, the gas station for about three or four years now.
Okay.
They're in the, uh, they're in the business of operating gas stations.
Correct. And so basically, they release gas vapors into the atmosphere for the Forest Park neighborhood, or Forest Hills neighborhood.
Are you asking that question?
Uh, yes, I am asking that question, you know, as a ga- gas station. So you're saying, what is their name, so I can?
Azan Energy, or Shaw, Shaw Syed. I don't know, I'm pretty sure he's still on. Syed Shaw.
Okay. Uh, would your client like to speak, or? Uh, you can, uh, answer, you know, as a gas station operator, they do release gas vapors and are next door to the current property that is trying to become a gas station.
Um, I would o- only imagine that, yes, they produce gas vapors. But I think the issue here isn't the fact that there is an existing gas station located next to residential, that there is another gas station that will be located next to residential. And so now you just don't have the issues, uh, not that there are any issues with the Shell station, but now you have two gas stations at the begin, at the, at the entrance of this neighborhood. And the applicant didn't even show where there were two gas stations on, uh, competing corners. So again, I would submit that just because there is an existing gas station there, isn't a license to have another gas station across the street.
Correct. All right, those were my questions. I'll ask, uh, if anyone from the commission has any questions for you, before we, uh, move to the applicant doing a cross-examine.
I just want to thank you for your, uh, for the time that you gave.
All right, my pleasure. All right, uh, Mr. Seymour?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, you said you had a, wanted to cross-examine?
I, I had a couple of questions for Mr. Schiller. Um, you actually hit on the first, so I can skip over that, which related to the lack of comparability of the two sales. Um, Mr. Schiller, um, what state regulation are you citing about requiring generators onsite?
So, Brian, as an attorney, you know that I provide argument, just like you do, and I'm not subject to cross-examination.
Okay, so everything you just said was purely argument and not evidence?
Well, there's evidence included into the PowerPoint presentation that's just pointed out via argument.
But if you, are you able to testify about, or answer any questions about anything that you said in that PowerPoint?
Am I able to answer any questions that I said in the PowerPoint?
Are you able to answer any question?
Under cross-examination, no.
Okay, so then.
I asked the city attorney to weigh in here, but I've been in a multitude of jurisdictions, and never, ever have I been cross-examined.
Sure, and, and that's fine if that's the position. If you're not the witness and I can't cross-examine on the evidence that was the basis of your argument, then I ask the entire thing to be stricken, because I don't have the ability to cross-examine on the facts that you included within it.
So, Jim, I'm gonna have you weigh in to this, uh, legal question regarding the, the presentation that was supposedly under, sworn under oath.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll be subject, I'll subject.
Excuse me, but I asked a question for our attorney. Uh, I'd like an answer first, and then Neil, you'll have an opportunity to speak.
Is my mic on? Could you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you now.
Okay, um, obviously, somebody who is not testifying cannot be cross-examined, so.
Okay. So the, the presentation was not a testifying, it was just argumentative and not evidence-based?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
With all, with all due respect.
No, excuse me, excuse me, we're gonna do it one at a time. So Neil, you had the opportunity to speak, and then Brian, after Neil's finished.
Yes, sir.
Am I on?
Yes, you are.
So when, um, putting on a case in opposing a development like we are doing, uh, we do not have the burden to produce facts. We don't have the burden to do anything. We point out where the applicant is, uh, doesn't meet the criteria and provide other facts. All of the facts in the, in the PowerPoint presentation are documented and, and verified mostly from the applications and the staff reports, as well as information found on websites. So, um, if it, it pleases the commission, I'll be more than happy to subject myself to cross-examination. I don't think it's necessary, but, uh, we don't have anything to hide. I do, would object to the fact that I am being cross-examined, but in order to move this along, I'll be happy to be subject to it.
All right, thank you for that. Um, you know, it's, it's kind of the quasi-judicial aspect of this, uh, session or, uh, public hearing, is that we, we do have this aspect of being judicial. And we had everyone sworn in who spoke, so that they were not making up facts. And so that's kind of where the, the cross-examination, I believe, should occur. So, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Floor to you, and so because I can't see either one of you, um, I'd like you to ask your questions with a number. And Neil, hopefully you will be writing these down, so, or making notes, so that any questions that Brian has, he can ask any of them, and then you'll respond. And then the, the, the aspect of this virtual meeting, it really can't play, we can't really play ping-pong going back and forth. So, uh, any of, uh, Neil's answers, I would guess you promote, uh, provide your own testimony that controversy, uh, that contradicts or supports. Does that work for both you, Neil and Brian?
Sure.
So I, just to clarify, so I'll get all of my questions, and Neil will then answer them in order, as opposed to me asking and then him answering?
Yeah, uh, that way, and then after he's done trying, uh, answering any of your questions, you have the ability to speak as the applicant. And then we will open it up to the commission to ask any questions of yourself or staff.
Thank you. So, um, I'm gonna short shrift some of these questions. The first question is, um, I would like, uh, what regulation did you cite when you said that state regulations require generators at all gas stations? Um, a second, a second part of.
Just wait your turn if you're writing down.
I'm writing.
The second part of that is where is your generator, or are you not in compliance with state law on your client's property? The next question, number two. You mentioned that, um, gas stations by the study you cited cause environmental hazard. Um, there was also discussion of cancer specifically from some others, but you talked about the environmental impacts of benzene. How much damage has your client's property done to the adjacent residential that is not buffered at all from the fueling facilities? Um, the third question is, you mentioned that our dumpster was only twenty feet from the neighboring residential. How far away is your client's dumpster? The second part of that question is that you mentioned that without being covered, that it would draw rodents. And I would ask that, as your client's property, it doesn't have a covered dumpster, how many rodents it has attracted? And the final question is. Relative to the photometric plan. Were you aware that it meets, actually exceeds code requirement? And second part of that question, what is the foot candle at the property line adjacent to the residential? Those are my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Brian. And so, um, Neil, uh, give you a few seconds to answer any of those questions. And. And that way, um, we can move forward. Um, and so in the meantime, I'd like to ask the, the commission also to have all their questions prepared for both, uh, the staff and, uh, the applicant, so that we could be expedient with, uh, the rest of the, this meeting.
Okay, I'm ready, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Now, I'll try to, uh, I think I took good notes. Um, so where, uh, the gas station, what, why, where in Florida law is it required to have gas, um, generators? Look at, uh, chapter, uh, five-two-six dot one-four-three Florida statutes. Uh, it requires certain retail gas stations to have access to backup power generators. So, um, we believe that this station should have a backup generator here. I don't know, uh, off the top of my head whether or not my client does have a backup generator or not. I know that they likely have access to generators since they are a, uh, company that runs gas stations. Uh, that answers your second part of the first question. Um, this third question was, uh, how much damage? I cited a number of environmental impacts, which is true, I did, because I cited the studies that they came from. How much damage have we done from the Shell station based on the environmental impacts? Obviously, I don't know the answer to that question, because, uh, my client hasn't provided me that information. But I would just like to say here, the, the existing gas station, the Shell station that is there is code compliant, has been code compliant, and, um, has relatively been issue-free, from my understanding. The Shell station isn't on trial here. It's the addition of a brand-new gas station at the entrance to this neighborhood, um, our dumpster. So, Mr. Seymour made mention of the fact that we have a dumpster that's not enclosed either. That's true. However, we are not a, uh, a larger convenience store that just made a number of promises to the residents that they were gonna cook local food and have fresh food and have sandwiches. So I think that's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Uh, and I don't think that that's a fair comparison. Uh, same thing with the covered dumpster and, and rodent. I mean, I think it's common knowledge that dumpsters attract rodents. Dumpsters, uh, two dumpsters twenty feet away from residential area is going to attract rodents, uh, just like this one will. Uh, no, I was not aware that the photometric plan exceeds code requirements. I'm not an engineer, uh, but I can read. And what I read on the photometric plan was that there are a number of inconsistencies that just don't make sense to me as a layperson. Uh, Mr. Seymour asked if I could read off the foot candles at the property line. A majority of them are zero. However, I would also mo- uh, make mention of the fact that there are places on the photometric plan where they point out monument signs, but then there's no reading of how many candles the monument signs throw out. So I don't even know if that photometric plan is, is accurate. I assume that it is. I, uh, respect for the applicant and all their consultants, but, um, that, that was the answer to all of Mr. Seymour's questions.
All right, thank you, Neil. So, Brian, if you have any comments, and then we're gonna move it to the, the commission.
So I have a couple of comments, the last of which I'm gonna leave for Neil Campbell, because he is an expert on the issues of the benzene, and he can speak directly to the report that, um, Mr. Schiller, uh, mentioned. So I'm gonna start with the answers to the cross-examination, because I think it's important to understand that what we're really talking about here, from Mr. Schiller particularly. And I want to start with Mr. Schiller, and I'll talk about some of the concerns of the neighbors. Mr. Schiller's concern for his client is competition. Because what he says is that, in his presentation, that state law requires all gas stations to have a generator, and he wants to know where our generator is. But when asked, he cited the statute that says it has to have access to a generator, and he assumes his client would. And I guarantee you, and I can testify to this under oath, because of the fifty-plus seven-elevens that we've done, they have access to generators and are compliant with state law. Um, the issue of the benzene that Mr. Schiller raised and the study, again, Mr. Campbell will go through it. There's no actual data to support what he's saying in this neighborhood and this place. And that's what's important, and that was my point. Another gas station doesn't change that. His client's gas station has been there for many years, and there hasn't been the problems that he's alleging would occur only from the seven-eleven that is buffered not only by a significant landscape buffer, but those fueling facilities are buffered by the convenience store itself. So you have the transition, which Josh talked about, of the fueling facility to the convenience store at the north end, back towards the residential. Um, relative to the dumpsters, I guess there was a misconception that, that Mr. Schiller had. Nobody said that we would be cooking onsite. There are fresh foods that are delivered daily to the site. So you get a sandwich in the morning to sell, they're not made onsite, uh, in that way. So in that case, that's, you know, what, what Josh was talking about with fresh food was that. The foot candles, um, the point of which is, and as Mr. Schiller said, he, he doesn't think that the photometric plan is wrong, but he wanted to point out things that have nothing to do with actual impact to the residential, because once you get to the property line, you have zero foot candles. And so what we've done is create something that actually does meet the code and does buffer things. So the basic premise of his objection really is about the competition that he's gonna have for his client. But that competition is better for the neighborhood. As one of the, uh, neighborhood speakers mentioned, uh, I think she used the word price gouging, which as a lawyer I won't use, because I don't have enough data, that's a legal thing. Um, but it's the highest, or some of the highest, gas prices in the neighborhood. And Mr. Schiller says there's no need, well, there's no need if you get to charge whatever you want to charge, but as Mr. Long mentioned, as an expert who did testify, who did do the research, he actually talked about what is coming and where that need is, and there is in fact competent substantial evidence for that. Um, so, uh, you, you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the question about the sales. There is actually no impact, no evidence of actual impact to the adjacent properties. He talked about a nineteen-seventy-four and a nineteen-seventy-one sale. One was very likely a vacant property at eight thousand dollars versus the, the other property that he cited, and I don't have that up. So, uh, those are not comparables in any way, nor is he competent to testify about that. Um, a couple of other issues, sustainability. Mr. Schiller talked about sustainability, says they didn't prove it because the staff report only has this first line that he highlighted. Well, there, there was another element to that paragraph, which he didn't mention, and of course, Josh talked about the various sustainability measures that are being done, the enhanced pedestrian environment that allows more walkability. Josh did talk about all of those issues. Um, he, uh, Mr. Schiller argued that other uses were less impactful, that this is the most impactful use. The expert, Mr. Long, testified quite the opposite, and in fact, there are other uses, including uses that are permitted by right, that are more impactful than this. In fact, the traffic study shows, I believe, that there are fourteen additional trips as a result of this particular impact. That is one of the things that is concerned. So this new community amenity with lower cost of gas certainly could be economically concerning to the Shell station across the street. And you were asked to consider that, but your code doesn't consider that. Your job is not to decide on competition, and whether there should or shouldn't be competition. And so the last thing I'd like to, to register is this, the benzene issue came up a lot. And I get that, because people are concerned about what might happen and where the change might be. Not Mr. Schiller's client who's concerned about competition, but the neighbors have real concerns. Seven-eleven does care about those concerns. Seven-eleven is one of the safest gas stations, and they run their facilities, just like Mr. Schiller says, that his basis for his client is that they're code compliant. Seven-eleven is code compliant. 7/11 is code compliant. The information available shows 7/11's safety record. But the study that was cited, I think Mr. Campbell can explain, missed the boat completely about what's going on here and doesn't actually give you any of that information. And he can talk a little more about why that's not a concern and including how that vent works, which is a very technical thing, which I even call it a thing because frankly, I'm not quite sure I understand it. So if I may, if I could have Neil close out, and of course, if you have any questions about any of it, we're happy to answer them.
Brian, I don't know if Neil has the opportunity to speak again. So you said you had your expert that was going to speak to the benzene issue?
Neil Campbell, I'm sorry, yes. But he's Canadian, so maybe he spells it different.
So, all right, so I'm going to let Neil Campbell speak. You are unmuted. Neil, please state your name, address, and for the record in that you are sworn in.
Neil Campbell, Apton, 725 Northwest, 159th Street, Miami Lakes, and I have been sworn in.
All right, and please state any expertise that you may have regarding testifying.
I worked in the petroleum industry on UST systems, both on compliance with regulation permitting for installation, repairs and remediation, assessment and remediation after failure.
Do you have any professional license that we should be made aware of? Okay. Please, please proceed.
Okay, the studies that were quoted, there's some holes to those, I guess, with the presentation because I don't know that they were at a gas station. The records I have seen related to there are laboratory testing and headspace analysis. We do it under very controlled environments and they're measuring vapor off the liquid at different temperatures. There's no equipment involved, much that there is at a gas station. There's no control devices, there's no arms. The conditions are not the event. Several times is being every time they fill up the gas, the gas vents out of the vent. That's not what it's designed to do. It's not what it does. In Florida, there was a stage two, remember, I'm sure you all remember that pain in the butt time when you had to take your gas nozzle and stick it with that funny accordion thing on it to try to get the vapor to go back in your gas tank. Well, what happened is over time, the car industry started building carbon cells inside the cars. They said, we don't need that. But on the tank side, they didn't stop the rule, which is called stage one vapor recovery. If you want tanker, they pull up and they connect the hose to drop the fuel and they connect another hose to what's called the vent line in the tanks and they put it back to the tanker. So when the fuel is dropped and goes to the tank, the vapor or air above the gasoline or petroleum product is displaced back into the tanker, which takes it back to the depot. Port Everglades in this case, most likely, or Port of Palm Beach. And then it vents it back into big tanks. That actually turns back into gasoline at night every time it gets cool and it condenses. So they don't want to lose that. That's actually product they lose. The vent on the tanks that is there, if there's an overpressurization or when a customer pumps gas, you can't keep sucking on a closed system or no electric pump is going to overtake it. So it allows air when the vacuum is high enough. And it would, under certain circumstances, go the other direction. But it doesn't because it requires high pressure to move the valve back. And that doesn't exist with underground storage tanks maintaining an ambient temperature around 70 to 75 degrees in the groundwater. They're in the groundwater. It'd be nice and cool having a bathtub. I think the experiments that I saw on the benzene vapor headspace analysis had the worst effect when they heated up the 104 degrees. So I don't know because there was no cited paper exactly, there was no train on the email, but that author has been cited in those types of studies. So everything is put in place to try to avoid any vapors. And that's what the car manufacturers have done it. The tank manufacturers have done it. The state of Florida has passed the law requiring this. This equipment is not optional. It's required. Every gas station has to have it. You don't have it, you don't operate. And that's, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Neil. And Brian, is there anything else that, oh, before you end, my city manager informed me that we received about, we received 18 online comments regarding the proposed ordinances. And so Jim, do you mind weighing in on that, whether I am required to read them in or suggested to or conditioned to read them in?
Mayor, is my mic on?
Yes, you are.
Yep. So you're not required to read them into the record, but they do need to be made part of the record. And the clerk should include them as they were submitted as part of the minutes of the meeting.
Okay. And be based upon this virtual meeting, if they, if anyone feels that their comments was not heard, do they have recourse at our next city commission meeting?
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay. And so do you, can you tell us what the recourse is for anyone who disagrees with the commission's vote?
Just remember that, just remember that the two ordinances in play this evening are only on for first reading. So the commission will conduct a public hearing at the next commission meeting with respect to those two ordinances. And by extrapolating that to the other agenda items that make up part of this 7/11 application anyway. So members of the public who did not have an opportunity to speak tonight or wish to elaborate on their comments if they think that they have not been taken into consideration, can do so at the next meeting.
Perfect. And are we required to read in at the second reading all public comments?
No, you're not. And the reason that in a clause I judicial proceeding, you're not required to do that under our current operating is that there's no ability to cross examine any of those people who are providing evidence or testimony.
But I don't think they, it is, they're not sworn in, so it is not, it is more comments, not evidence based.
And they could just be reviewed by the commission during the meeting. They don't have to be read into the record. They should be available to the commission, but they do not need to be read.
Okay, thank you. All right, so.
Mayor Grant, if I may, there are several comments in the comment section of the GoToWebinar interface.
Yeah, is that, where is the comment section?
It is under the questions interface, the questions section. If you like, I can read them off to you.
Yeah, it's dealing with the scrolling of that. Hold on, I need to. It's not allowing me to see, so yes, please read any of the questions that we received.
Okay, the first question is from Trevor Rosenkrantz. It says Marcus Hilbert, Anna Maria Rule, Burnett, Andrea Mora, Tendun Tiberry, Vent Pipe Emissions From Storage Tank At Gas Stations: Implications For Setback Distance. Science of Total Environment, 2019.
So John, he was able to speak and so, oh, hold on, I can see it now.
This was only three minutes ago.
Yeah, that's one of the papers. I'm sorry, can you all hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Yeah, that is a paper that cited for the vent emissions being 10 times that. That's done using the, just a fuel measurement device stationed at a vent pipe at two large gas stations in the Midwest and Northwest that took measurements over a three week period.
Yeah, all right, thank you, Trevor. Is there, can you list?
Do you see the other question, Mayor Grant?
The somehow it's not popping out, so I can't.
Okay, the other question is from Ali Siddiqui. It says, not sure why, why the actual problem is being ignored adding something to the community that's not needed. The two attorneys are going after each other, ignoring the fact that they are adding more health issues to the community.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and Trevor Rosenkrantz replied to that or to something. It says, it is, it's the paper.
Okay.
I can close public comment via the GoToWebinar interface.
Yes, please.
Okay. They have been closed.
Excellent, all right. So we have closed public comment for the first two readings or for the first two, I'm sorry. And now I'm going to move it to the city commission to ask any sort of questions to the applicant or to staff. Commissioner Romulus, would you like to begin because this is in your district?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay. Yeah, I have no questions of the applicant nor the intervenor, I believe that was the name. Simply because this is something that I believe is much needed in this community. Living here in District Three, this is a project that is going to be right here in the middle of District Three, right off of Wilbright and Seacrest. You're looking at intersection that is just atrocious. It has been in this state for multiple years. And with everything that we are doing right just down the street in Point, on Point and Beach Boulevard and Seacrest, it only is fitting to match that improvement here on Wilbright. We have three namesake thoroughfares here in Point and Beach. You have Wilbright, you have Point and Beach Boulevard, you have Gateway. Gateway is another story for another time. We'll work on that as time goes on. Point and Beach, there's a plan for redeveloping it and making it better and improving it, especially it being the namesake of our city. And Wilbright is definitely, this is much needed. It's about time. This is the impetus, I believe, of what we have been working on and what we continue to strive for, which is improving our city, putting us on a better footing and aesthetically making us just something that people are pleased and proud of to call home and drive home to or at least come visit when they're in the area. Having that 7/11 there and just being an eyesore in that community, it's unacceptable. And I'm, for one, I'm happy that they have decided to step up their game and upgrade their facility. Yes, it comes with the gas station included. That may not be the most ideal because as the intervenor has mentioned, there are several gas stations within a one mile radius. So it's not necessarily a necessity, but we are also looking at the next 50 years. It may not be a necessity right now, but in the next 10, 20, 30 years, as population increases, as more people move down to Florida and more people move into Point and Beach, we know that this will be a necessity. So I see it as that way as future planning. In addition to looking at what that intersection looks like in terms of driving it every day, going to work, to and from work, or picking up my kids. As a resident mentioned earlier, Ms. Susan Oyer, I've on multiple occasions had to be very careful or just avoid using that outer lane to make that left turn from Seacrest to Wilbright because you want to avoid potentially rear ending or being rear ended by somebody as you make that left turn. It's a very dangerous intersection and I see these improvements as a way to ensure that we decrease on those potential rear end accidents or at least alleviate the potential of having them happen. Because again, everybody who's making that left turn is always very cautious and tries to give the cars in front of them a wide berth to prevent from having to go down that path of having to ruin your morning or your day by getting into a rear end collision. So that being said, and taking into consideration all the residents and their comments, there are several residents who are for it, who understand that this would be a beautification project to improve the look and the feel and the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And there are several residents who are concerned and rightly so. They have concerns that are justified. But I believe the applicant has done a good job of addressing those. We're talking about landscaping and buffering. We have a six foot wall that will prevent any crossover from what's happening on the, on the commercial and business side of things to those residents. I believe that is a significant improvement from what it was before. It was just a, I believe, in my opinion, it's just a chain link fence or something like that that's there now. So and you know, there's, there's no buffering, there's no hiding what is actually happening there. There's no noise cancellation. So this six foot wall, concrete wall will help alleviate and fix all of that. You also think about the fact that, you know, we're talking environmental pollution. You know, I'm somebody who's a real strong advocate of sustainability and environmental safeguards and measures. And I believe, you know, with the measures that are being put into consideration by the applicant, these will mitigate a lot of these concerns of putting out those pollutants into the air and into the environment. So the work and the due diligence has been done by the applicant, in my opinion. And that helps to alleviate the concerns that I initially had about this project and this property. And I will be voting in support of this project because it is needed. It is an absolute necessary project for District Three, for this part of Point and Beach, this southern portion of Point and Beach. It's needed. So with that, I will end my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Romulus. Now I'll go back to Commissioner Katz. Are you there?
Yes, sir. I agree with Commissioner Romulus on this and I intend to vote in support of the changes that are proposed. Thank you.
Commissioner, hey? Do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a few comments. I think that the applicant has really met the city's requirement. And so the, you know, that ship has already left the dock. I don't want to see another trade wind, for those of you old enough to remember that. And Neil brought up some good points, very dramatic, but many of what he said, you know, really, in my opinion, didn't have much to do with this particular project as what we are doing here. And I think if you look at the number of people that spoke against it, it was, it was very few and compared to 7,900 people that we have here in the city of Boynton who are looking at us to make improvements. And I want to say this, and I want it to be heard, that the 7/11 property owners, they have development rights to do what they want to do with this property. And so I think that the commission would be hard pressed to deny it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pensurka?
Thank you, and I echo many of the sentiments said by Commissioner Romulus. This is a much needed upgrade for the community. Now, I don't want to repeat the points that have already been said, but I do want to say a couple of additional items. You know, I sat here, how long has it been? Has it been over an hour? Listening from a representative of the gas station that is literally right across the street, that is also literally adjacent to housing, to residential. And we've heard it said numerous times that gas stations next to residential is not compatible in this neighborhood coming from an applicant that represents a gas station that is next to a neighborhood. And concerns of benzene and vapor and decreasing property values. You know, I, you know, I appreciate the health concerns. It's our number one priority to protect the public. But let's also remind ourselves that there are gas stations, there are two gas stations at intersections, if not three gas stations at other intersections around the county. And people are not dying of cancer. And if this was the case, our public health department would have all been all over this and it would have been all over the media. So while we do have a study, anyone in science can tell you that we do not make decisions based on a study. A study is just that. And it needs to be collective effort of many scientists from, you know, many different institutions to, to come up with it. To come up with a with a with a concrete conclusion. So while we heard this presentation that I've also heard, you know, we do not have the burden of proof to provide facts. This is a hearing. I feel like my time has been wasted. I will listen, I will, and I appreciate the concerns of of the residents. I'm here to listen. I've read through every single email, and I've tried to respond to as many people as I can. But I don't know, I think somebody said it during the presentation. You know, the real elephant in the room here is somebody doesn't want competition. The gas station across the street next to residential doesn't want another gas station next to a residential. So I know whoever mentioned that, thank you for pointing the elephant in the room. And if I thought that there was concrete scientific evidence to to support the idea that this was somehow poisoning the community. Absolutely, I would not be in favor of this, but there is not. And you don't even need to be a scientist. You simply have to look around in other parts of the county where there are two or more. Gas stations. So. If having a gas station next to a residential is a problem, then there's a problem with the Shell station because that's a gas station next to a residential.
All right.
And we should have outrage for that as well. Where where is the outrage for that? Why is it selective outrage? So I'll end my comments.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. My comments kind of echo the rest of the the commission. You know, this is a redevelopment of parcel. We are. Making the corner Wilbright-Seacrest better, adding the new bus station. I've ridden on the seventy, which goes north and south on Seacrest, and I think it's going to be very beneficial for the neighborhood. So one of the things that has happened since the all the vehicles have stopped being on the road is that. It seems to be a little bit cooler. The air seems to be a little less dense. And so I feel that, you know, it's. Something that we need as a city to provide is better. Mobility for our residents. Now, the the fact is, is that the county is going to be getting their money for an impact fee. Well, hopefully, they will spend that money on that intersection so that we could have a right turn lane. Whether it's coming from Seacrest to Wilbright or from Wilbright to south of Seacrest. So that we can help with the traffic flow because I do realize that traffic does back up there. And it is something that we need to work with the county and the state so that they. Change the Seacrest Boulevard from a suburban road to an urban road that makes a complete street. That puts bike lanes there so that all of the people in the Forest Hill neighborhood have an easier way to move around. And the aspect of the intervener saying that. The future land use shows commercial on Seacrest, I added something I'm in favor for of. It's what we are seeing now on Gulf Road where certain residential community buildings became office commercial, and now they're becoming multifamily, and we're adding. In a prescriptive manner to the density of the city, not just by building huge projects in the middle of neighborhoods. And so with Seacrest being a collector road, with Wilbright being artillery road, it does make sense on a city planning aspect of having. A gas station on that, a gas station on that corner, similar to the other gas stations in the city. And so if there's no more further comments from the city commission, I'll ask for a motion on proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero zero five.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please? Crystal, you there?
Yes.
All right.
Mayor Stephen Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pensilga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Vote is one hundred and five.
May I have a motion on proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero zero six?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Pensilga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is five oh.
All right. And may I have a motion?
Mayor, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say.
Suggest, yeah, it's your custom not to approve site plans and conditional uses until the ordinance is passed.
Yep, this is not my first time either. So may I have that motion to table to item eight B to the second reading?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. The two rooms for public hearing, item eight C and D are tabled to May nineteenth. And that leads us to new business proposed resolution number twenty dash zero three nine. Authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and the city of Delray to share the engineering design costs. To rehabilitate Gulfstream Boulevard, Southeast Thirty-Six Avenue.
So moved.
Second, discussions?
Yes, Christine, Commissioner Romulus.
Thank you, Mayor. I I just want to say I am wholeheartedly in favor of re. Doing that street that is Southeast Thirty-Six, also known as Gulfstream. That is a very vital road. Again, that's our road that. As people are going from south to north, leaving Delray and entering Boynton, that is their introduction to our city. And the state of that road has just been atrocious for a very long time, and this is very, very much needed, and I am in full support. So thank you very much, and I highly approve this.
All right, thank you. And I guess one of the. The aspects of it is if we could see the design study. Or the, so that we hopefully we can make that into a complete street. Because I know that Del Delray is doing what they can for their Northeast Second Avenue. Make it a complete street all the way from Lake Ida North. So. We have a motion to second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Jim, proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero zero one zero.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, meaning Article Three of Chapter Eighteen of the Boynton Beach Code of Ordinance is entitled Municipal Police Officers Retirement Trust Fund. Amending Section eighteen dash one sixty-four to provide for mutual consent regarding the use of one eighty-five money and an increase in the number of. In an increase in the member contributions. Amending Section eighteen one sixty-five definition of beneficiary. To allow for payment of a lump sum benefits to a trust, amending Section eighteen one sixty-nine. To add a normal retirement benefit for police officers hired after October one, twenty nineteen, and add a maximum pension benefit. Amending Section eighteen one sixty-nine E to reflect the new benefit for police officers hired after October one. Two thousand and nineteen, amending Section eighteen one seventy-four to comply with the new Federal Secure Act. Amending Section one, Section eighteen one seventy-five Deferred Retirement Option Plan to provide that members hired. After October one, two thousand and nineteen will be subject to Section eighteen dash three hundred of the city code for terms of the drop plan. And to provide the process for distribution of drop in the event of death of the drop participant. With a balance in the account and establishing a priority distribution in the event there is no designated beneficiary. Providing for conflict codification, severability, and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board, commission? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pensilga?
Yes.
Vote is five oh.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone who who's in attendance. Thank you, staff. Especially thank you, Beth, for, you know, almost five hours. For the 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 future agenda item, I'd like the, if we can put onto old business, an update of Tom Kaiser Veterans Memorial Park. I've been getting a couple of calls during the this pandemic, and hopefully. We can get an answer for him by the next city commission meeting. Lori, you have an answer now?
Just talk to him. Yeah, monument's ready to go in. So we're we're, I think we made contact with Mr. Kaiser today to have him come out and meet us and just. Make sure we, you know, we want to put it where the old sign is, but it's ready to go. So we're very excited to get it installed.
All right, so hopefully we we can get a picture before a next city commission meeting.
Yep, we'll work on it.
All right, thank you. All right, if there anything else from the commission before we adjourn?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to compliment you and staff for just how smoothly these meetings have been running. I, you know, it was an unpredictable transition, but, you know, you've done a great job and staff has done a great job supporting it.
All right, thank you. And we'll we'll get you a laptop soon.
Hey, guys, I just. Hey, Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Hay.
I just want to let you know, I just kept everything going like our previous commissioner. I'm just saying.
All right, thank you very much.
He's gonna find you.
I know, I know.
All right, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, thank you. John, is there anything you need to do?
I will say in my little exit script, as a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available at the city of Boynton Beach's website at W W W dot BoyntonBeach dot org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and the city staff, thank you for attending today's City of Boynton Beach Commission Meeting. Be safe and have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Meeting's adjourned.